I go to Princeton University, majoring in psychology.
I go to Harvard and I'm majoring in economics.
I'm going to Duke and I'm majoring in psychology and global health.
I'm going to Johns Hopkins and I'm majoring in chemistry.
Our advantage, great teachers and programs at Orange County Public Schools. See what's possible for you.
There are magnet programs, advanced placement and honors classes, and guidance counselors who help us choose the right courses. You can even earn college credit while in high school.
OCPS has programs for every type of learner.
Orange County Public Schools, leading students to success.
All right, well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the meeting of the Orange County School Board. I have to say, I walked in and I thought the meeting had started without me because this is the quietest I have ever seen a crowd before a school board meeting. So, welcome, and it's wonderful to hear the sound of a future student back there in the back. Little Rebecca, where'd she go? Oh, there she is. Hello, Rebecca. And her brother. So, without further ado, let's go ahead, and if we could, everybody stand and bow your head for a moment of silence if you would like to join us, and then we'll do the pledge. All right, well, we have a special guest with us tonight, and to help us introduce him, Orange County Public Schools Director of Environmental Compliance and Sustainability Coordination. I think that is the best, longest title of anybody in OCPS. I said that out without trying to pause once, Ms. Fowler. Jennifer Fowler is with us. Welcome, Ms. Fowler.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Sublett, School Board members, and Superintendent Jenkins. Earlier this school year, Orange County Public Schools received a distinguished honor for the entire district recognizing our long-range sustainability, strategic objectives, and targets. And here to officially present to the School Board, the 2013-14 Florida Green School Award is the Vice Chair of Sustainable Florida, Tammy Brister.
Oh, great. Thank you, Jennifer. Good evening, everyone. As Jennifer mentioned, I'm Tammy Brister, and not only am I the Vice Chair of Sustainable Florida, but I'm also the Environmental Integration Director for the Walt Disney World Resort. And I am honored to be here tonight to recognize the exemplary accomplishments of the Orange County Public School District in the area of environmental sustainability. So, the Florida Green School Network is a coalition of education, environmental, and sustainability advocates promoting energy and resource efficiency, physical health, and environmental literacy. Created by the Florida Legislature in April of 2009, actually on Earth Day, the Green School Awards is facilitated through a partnership between the Department of Education, the Department of Environmental Protection, the Department of Health, and Sustainable Florida. And actually, there are three or five categories where we recognize different schools and areas for the Green School Awards. Those are students, classrooms, teachers, schools, and school districts. So, I'm here recognizing OCPS as a leader among the state's school district in creating safe, green, healthy schools for students, teachers, and administrators. So, on behalf of the Florida Green Schools Network, the Sustainable Florida Board of Directors, and this proud mother of 2013 and soon-to-be 2015 OCPS graduate, please accept my heartfelt congratulations on winning the 2014 Green School Award in the school district category. Thank you so much.
Wow, but I want to say, that's pretty cool.
This truly was a district effort involving staff from environmental compliance, facilities, health services, transportation, and community resources. In 2013-14, school year alone, the district avoided more than $1.5 million and 11 million pounds of carbon dioxide emissions. In addition, the Transportation Department avoided 378,513 gallons of diesel fuel by reducing idle time of buses and increasing the use of biodiesel. Those are just a couple of the highlights in what the district has been able to save through our sustainability objectives.
Well, you know, on behalf of the taxpayers, one, thank you, because I've never heard it referred to as avoided, Ms. Fowler, but I love that because that also saved the taxpayers a ton of money, even at whatever we buy diesel fuel for, when you multiply that. So, that's very, very impressive. And Ms. Fowler, congratulations. And Ms. Brister, thank you so much for your work on behalf of the council and for this recognition. This means an awful lot to Orange County Public Schools because we hear all the time, especially from our young people, how important it is for us to be an environmentally friendly school district and to reduce our carbon footprint, and y'all are making that happen. So, I want to recognize this entire team as I call your name. If you could please stand and remain standing until I've called everybody's name, and then I know we'd like to give you all a round of applause, and then I know this board would like to shake your team's hand as well, Ms. Fowler. So, we are joined, of course, by Jennifer Fowler, Laura Gilbert. Laura, if you could stand, somebody well-known to us, Mark Clinch. Also well-known to us, Mary Bruno. Actually, all these are well-known to us. Mark Chiampi. Did I say the name right, Mr. Chiampi? Chiampi? Chiampi, okay, forgive me. Bill Wen. Steve Huckabee. John Brennan. Jim Seguin. Seguin? Sorry, Jim. Pat Carney. Del Croft. Kim Eisenweis. Brenda Christopher Munch. John Zarega. Lynda Langa. Sarah Al. Jovan Aponte. Katrina Somerville. Pam Carson. And Sean Tucker. And I know the topic of conversation tomorrow will be to ask Lyndon, those who come all the time to us, Mark, does he always mutilate names that badly? They'll tell you I do, but I want you to know on behalf of the School Board how very, very proud we are of all the work you do for the children in Orange County and the taxpayers. Thank you very, very much. With that, we'd love to shake your hands. Ms. Cadel.
You know, I want to brag on Jennifer because, as you all know, I volunteer with Leadership Winter Park. And they have changed what their community service project is for the class this year, and they divided into groups, and one of them is sustainability. And they were partnering with Keith Winter Park Beautiful, and they were trying to increase recycling, and they had targeted Orange County Public Schools because they didn't think we were doing anything. So, I followed procedure, and I asked for assistance from the superintendent, and we needed to send someone. And she said Jennifer will come. And so, when Jennifer presented everything that Winter Park High School was doing to cut down on the impact on the environment, I think they were all surprised, but it was really cool to be able to say, "Well, we're doing that, and we're doing that, but yeah, we could get a little bit better on that." And I think it's one of those things that doesn't get a lot of play, but we're doing a lot. And so, thank you to all of you for being involved, for making a difference for future generations. I appreciate it.
Thank you again, Ms. Brister, for your work and for shepherding us through this process. And Ms. Fowler, thank you. And, you know, I'm going to look at the big boss because I don't really have the authority to say this, but that's it for our recognition. So, is her team free to leave if they'd like, Dr. Jenkins? Or no? Okay. Well, that's why I look at the big boss when it comes to employee matters. Usually, we dismiss our honorees at this point, but y'all are sort of like in another world of honoree and employee. So, Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you for indulging me, Chair. Certainly, we are extremely proud. OCPS has such wonderful team members, and we always make a point that not only are our teachers and instructional staff critical to our vision and mission, all of our support staff are critical as well. And so, for all of our team members being recognized here tonight, congratulations again. Thank you for your support, and you are really free to go.
Well, good, because I was going to tell Ms. Brister she can go, because I do. All right, we do not have any newly-appointed administrators. We do have one other person I'm going to recognize in a moment, but first, let me get to that point of the agenda and make a couple of preliminary announcements. Any individual who would like to address an item on the consent or non-consent agenda may do so by filling out a speaker card. It looks like this, that you can get from Ms. McGill up here at the far-left-hand side of the dais. And when that agenda items comes up, I will recognize you at that time. We do not have a strategic plan update tonight. We do not have any newly-appointed administrators tonight. So, Dr. Jenkins, do we have any changes to the agenda?
We have two changes, Chairman. One is item 502, which was withdrawn, and item 505, which has a revised resolution that was added as well. I'd like to clarify, we do have an administrator. We have no school-based administrators.
Thank you.
I'll leave that to you.
Oh, okay.
Me or you?
Do you want to do it now? I'm going to leave it to you.
Okay. So, we don't have any school-based administrators. I do have an administrator that many of you are familiar with. I didn't think she would be here tonight. She thought it was appropriate for her to come, so she's actually made her family come out as well. Lauren Roth will be our new senior manager for Facilities Communications, leaving her former role with the Sentinel. I don't know if you want to say a word, Lauren?
Okay, well, thank you, guys, for having me. I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity, and I'm looking forward to telling the OCPS story in a different way. And this is my daughter Rebecca. This is my son, William, and my husband, Mike. So, thanks again.
Well, you know, I do want to say a few words on behalf of Lauren, and this is really for Mike William and for Rebecca. By the way, what beautiful children you both have, and very well behaved tonight. I've been in this business a lot longer than I care to let folks know, you know, over 20 years now, and I've probably had, gosh, 25, 30, 35 reporters cover me, whether or the legislature when I was in legislature, while I was on the school board, and my community activities, whatever. Mike, I just want you to know that your wife is probably the finest reporter I've ever had cover, anybody that I've served on. And not a great reporter because she just wrote glowing great things about us, which she would do when we merited, a story about glowing great things. But even when we needed constructive criticism, or even when we needed to be dinged, she is by far the most even-handed reporter. I don't think I've ever read a Lauren Roth article in four and a half years where she did not go and ask for the other side of the story and make sure that both sides of the story were presented in an article, even if it's what we would call on the school board a negative article, which sometimes was justified, and always, you know, was justified if she wrote it. And that's a rarity. I wish I could say that that always happened, but today in journalism, that almost never happens. More often, we'll read an article, and it will just be all one side and one perspective, and the other side will not be quoted. And she always strove to strive to get the article right and to really do her research. So, when I heard that she applied for this job, I did put in a plug and say that I thought she would be great, but it was the hardest plug I ever put in in my life because we've had reporters that haven't risen to that level. And, you know, life is like a box of chocolates when it comes to the reporters that cover you. You never know what you're going to get, and I just hope we get one that's half as good a reporter as Lauren is. And obviously, she's a great mother as well because she's being overwhelmed by love right now. So, I've gone on enough wax and poetic, but Lauren, really, we're going to miss your coverage at the Sentinel, but we're glad to have you on the team and feel blessed to have you. Mrs. Gordon.
Wow, thank you. You said it all. The truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. I just thought it was so unique when he came out to our school, and Dr. Jenkins, also and her entire staff, executive cabinet, most of them came out to my school where I teach in Osceola County. And it was very funny that Lauren came out, and it's, you know, my school, you just can't walk in. So, my principal was asking her, "Where are you going with that notepad?" She said, "I'm not taking it anywhere. I'm going to leave it right here in the library." And I think she enjoyed, and I think when she went there, we were trying to get positive pathway established and, you know, work with the Dr. Jenkins staff and the board with the restorative justice. And I believe when she came out, everybody kept waiting, "Oh, my God, what is she going to write about us? What is she going to write?" I think she saw such a positive attitude there. At my school in Osceola County, there was no article, and because it was nothing to write, but children are learning, and this is the way to go. And then, when we did get our positive pathway, and she was here at the board when the board approved it, it was just awesome. But I want to say, you talked about 20-something years, and I have 50 years, right? I have 50 years in education, and I love every moment of it. And I know the struggle we've had even with the union. You did not, she did not pick up the negative stories like other reporters did from the union, even though the union was not given the information. But she always wrote positive things about AFT, NEA, even the National School Board Association, NFEA, and NFS, and we had something even when Joey was the chair. It was always something very, very positive. So, I really want to say, you know, I welcome, I welcome Lauren, and not any of her stories were negative compared to what this board had to go through with the other superintendent. So, I do want to let her know she did the truth, the whole truth, as you stated, and nothing but the truth. And I love the statement she made. She'll be writing about OCPS in a different light. But all of us will be able to work with her because we all are building schools, okay, in our neighborhoods. So, we'll have that. She'll be writing for us this time. But I really want to thank her for the entire time she has been here that I've had the opportunity. But I have to agree with my colleague, Chairman Sublett, in reference to, we've gone through so many negatives, and it is so good to have somebody writing positive about us because we are a positive school district. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Again, congratulations, and it is a school night, so we'll let you go as well, Lauren, if you'd like, although I guess that's up to Dr. Jenkins again. I keep overstepping my bounds because we're recognizing Monday. Okay, well, then I can let you go because you don't work for us till Monday. Mike, thank you for coming down. It's good to see you again, and again, you have beautiful children. Have a great week. All right, at this time, and oh, by the way, Leslie, you're okay, too. But Leslie's not going to cover us permanently. I would be doing cartwheels if she was. I've found out.
Actually, with all due respect, Mr. Sublett, Leslie, thank you for keeping the feet to the fire on Tallahassee. We appreciate it.
Leslie's never going to come back. She doesn't only have a tradition of calling out reporters from the dais on this school board.
Oh, yes, she does, because every time she walked into the room to the coalition meeting, we had an agreement that when the press walks in, because Orange County School Board members know who the press is and the other nine districts don't, that we would make an announcement. So, I think Leslie can tell you on more than one time, I would say Orlando Sentinel reporter Leslie Postal has joined us this morning. Welcome, Leslie.
There you have it. All right. So, let us get back to the agenda. Can I have a motion at this time to adopt the agenda? Adopt the agenda as proposed by Dr. Jenkins? Been moved by Ms. Cadel, seconded by Vice Chair Gordon. Is there any debate or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show the agenda adopted. We do not have any public hearings tonight. We are on the consent agenda now. I do want to make one other recognition before we go to our public speaker. It is Building Safety Month, as we've recognized on the agenda, and we are joined tonight by Gerard Katani, Director of Building Code Compliance. Mr. Katani, if you could stand and let us recognize you. Welcome. And I know that, can I repeat that?
Yes.
Actually, you know, in all seriousness, Mr. Katani, you have a tough job. I think there's probably no more thankless job out there in Orange County Public Schools, and you've been doing a wonderful job for us, so thank you. Sometimes I measure how we're doing with our Building Code Compliance Office by the volume of complaints I'm getting, and speaks volumes that you're building compliant schools, but I don't think I've received a single complaint from the industry in the last six months to 12 months. So, thank you for that. All right, we have one speaker on the consent agenda, Ms. Cindy Hamilton. Come on up, Cindy. That means that we're all yours tonight. We're all, we're all yours. And Ms. Hamilton, you know the drill. If you could start with your name and address.
Cindy Hamilton, 4199 Tomasa Court, Orlando 32812. For the very first time, I don't have notes, but I noticed something on the agenda item and that I wanted to talk about, and that is the request for course code for science lab. And I'm sure that you remember, Ms. Gordon, our conversations about the loss of that course code about a year ago. We talked about that. So, I was happy to see that it is again being requested. And when we were discussing this a year ago, we talked about the information that I had received from the Florida Department of Education and why we didn't already have a course code, which was this piece, this right now, what you're going to do tonight, never happened. And I was told by the DOE that the course code was not approved because it was sent back with a request for this process, for all of you to vote on the course code. However, because of that, because that didn't happen, all our science labs in elementary school were closed. And so, very few science lab teachers are teaching science lab in the elementary schools here in Orange County right now unless their principals got very creative with the way that they were able to code their time. And I just had a discussion with this when I saw it on the agenda with a friend of mine who is still teaching science lab here in Orange County, and she has already been reassigned to a classroom because principals have finished their budgets, and they will not be having a science lab at her school next year. So, I'm wondering, it's great that you have applied for the course code, but if principals have completed their budgets, how are they going to afford the science labs if you get the course code? So, that's what I wanted to say about this. But thank you for making the attempt. It's good to see you back in there. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton. Dr. Jenkins, can I ask you to touch on some of the points raised by Ms. Hamilton?
Sure. Thank you, Chairman. I would make a couple of points for the board. Number one, while this is an application, I don't want anyone to get overly excited because we've had some indication that it may not be positively received, but we are applying for it. I don't want folks to think this means they are reinstated because we have to wait for that response. Secondly, school principals making their budgets, should there be a positive response, we amend and adjust our budgets and our assignments throughout the summer. So, there would be an opportunity for principals, should they desire, to make such amendments. I don't want you to hold your breath that, thinking that this is going to be a given from the state. While we've not had extremely positive feedback on the hopefulness of it, we are submitting our application.
All right, thank you for that, Dr. Jenkins. And I've got a question on that. It's, and I haven't asked for the numbers, and it's truly not a loaded question, Ms. Hamilton. I really want to know the numbers, but it's come to my attention, a lot of the schools are still offering those labs, they're just doing it as a carve-out of their other instructional time where they have that leeway. I'd love to find out, not necessarily tonight, Dr. Jenkins, but how many are offering them because I know that they're very popular with a lot of parents and teachers, but I also know a lot of schools are still doing them, they're just carving out the time within their instructional time.
That's an excellent point. It would be similar to teachers taking their students to the media center as opposed to, Ms. Gordon knows exactly what I'm talking about. You can't just say media is on the wheel, but teachers can take their students to the media center for an instructional lesson. Quite frankly, that is something that we can do in the, and several are doing in the elementary school as well. That's an excellent point. In essence, it is still the classroom teacher having science time in the lab.
Ms. Cadel.
And I was going to wait until we pass the consent agenda, but on Friday at our volunteer appreciation, I'm not sure if, I think it's a district-wide award, it's the Adult Volunteer of the Year, and she's coming from the East Learning Community, and she's winning it for manning the science lab at Lakewood Elementary. And they stalk the science lab. Teachers send in requests, and she has fifth-grade students that come and deliver the supplies to the classroom with all of the instructions for doing the different experiments. So, there are some creative things happening in some of our schools, and we will be recognizing a volunteer on Friday for what she's done with that science lab.
Thank you, Ms. Cadel. All right, do I have any other questions or comments on the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, can I entertain a motion to adopt it? Been moved by Ms. Gould, seconded by Ms. Flynn. Is there any debate or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adoption of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show the consent agenda adopted. All right, we are.
My light's on again. I turned it off and turned it back on. We have two very special people in the audience today who I am going to call out. Megan Gee and Evelyn Perez are here, and they were very interested in making sure we approve the construction documents for the Wedgefield School. You have heard me talk about the Wedgefield mommies. Well, there's a Wedgefield, there are Wedgefield mommies and one grandpa. Grandpa's not here tonight, but those are two of the Wedgefield mommies. And just to set the record correct, I did not orchestrate the walkthrough through county commission chambers. One of those two did it. I don't know which one, but they are the ones who started the walkthrough. So, I told them as soon as the consent agenda was approved that they would know that construction's going to be starting on the Wedgefield School, like, probably tomorrow. So, I just wanted you all to put a face with the people who worked so hard to help us get that school site. And it's a school night, and it's work night, and if you two want to leave, you may leave.
Thank you for your advocacy on our behalf. Sincerely appreciated. All right, reports by general counsel.
No report this evening.
Okay. Be still my heart. Dr. Jenkins?
Thank you, Chairman. I do, I have two items, actually. Dylan, if we can get those slides queued up. Folks in the back room weren't expecting us to get through the consent agenda so swiftly. Mentioned to you that our superintendent's Student Advisory Council had been working on the project that I gave them around rivalry among some of our high schools and coming up with the marketing plan. I should have mentioned to you earlier, the whole YouTube station, they were all over previously. But I want you to see what those young people came up with. Our graphic arts folks did some cleanup, but they came up with the schemes that are going to be around our peace talks. Peace Talks is actually the event where we will have winter sports first and then spring sports. Captain and co-captain coaches and athletic directors convening in peace talks here, where they will be signing a pledge and signing a banner. But we gave those students, they were so sharp, we gave those students the task, and they came up with both the social media and PR campaign. They're doing PSAs, they're doing some Bright House PSAs, they're doing posters for the schools and actual announcements on the morning video in our high schools where they know the rivalries are, shall we say, most active. And so all of that creative work, they are still preparing, but I wanted you to see what they came up with. And I will tell you, any of my staff that were in the room, they came up with and massaged and worked in groups. The notion that they wanted was that we have 19 high schools, but one team. And so they want that to actually be on the front of these shirts that they are going to market. And their communication, their whole social media campaign is going to be hashtag OCPS rivalry love. If you notice on the peace sign, it has all of the high schools, that was their rendition, all the high schools around that actual setup. And then they have the number 19 is going to be what they want to stand out, 19 schools, one team, and then the rest of their media campaign will advance from there. I can tell you, I know how talented our young people are. I was impressed with them the first time we got together, but this just blew me away when they got to this actual culmination of their project. You will be getting information about the peace talks. They will actually come here on a Wednesday afternoon, 2:30 or so, and my advisory council will be helping to actually run that meeting. We're going to have some actual professional athletes come and say a few words to them. And then they are to take that message back, and they've got a campaign planned, not just for the end of the year, but for the fall as well. Very excited, very pleased. I just wanted you to see how sharp our young people are. All right, second item, and I figured I'd get that one out first.
Before we leave that, can I go, I think a couple board members want to make...
Absolutely.
Mrs. Robinson?
Thank you. That's a huge thank you. I know you and I have been talking about it for years, the rivalries that have gotten a little out of hand. I have several of them in my area. And I just so thank you, thank you, thank you for going to the kids, because they will find the answer. They're so smart, and they're so wonderful. So thank you for this. I'm just, I'm so excited. I want a T-shirt. Can we all, can we all get a T-shirt? Okay, peace.
Ms. Cobert?
Okay, I'm absolutely thrilled. And some of this did, it came to a head with me, with some of mine and Nancy's schools. Longtime, healthy rivalries here in Orange County that really got out of hand and really got ugly. And it is a few kids, but it's part of the culture. And I strongly had emphasized that so many of the answers have to come from the kids, because we as adults, we can talk to them, we can lecture, we can role model, but when you put it to the kids, often they can come up with the actual solutions. So I love this. I love that you made them an integral part of the solution. Those morning PSAs are going to be great. And let's hope very soon, Ms. Gould, that'll be a 20 on the front of that T-shirt. So, well done. Thank you for really including the students as part of the solution.
Ms. Moore?
Yes, I didn't have any totem poles chopped down, but I, as I know you did. However, I've had some pretty tense moments at some football games that it's certainly a problem. And I think as we go forward, I really like the fact that it's Orange County public schools. And there've been many a games, and I tend to do it in the playoffs, and I can remember sitting up in a certain Blue Darter Stadium, and they'd announce, oh, Mrs. Gordon's not even here, when Oak Ridge, you know, was having their Cinderella year, and I was so proud of them. And, you know, they would announce the scores from all over. And anytime an Orange County team was making it farther, I would, you know, holler and scream, and my mother would go, "You're going to get us beat up if you keep doing this." And so, you know, it'd be a great way with your young people can brainstorm that we can be as happy about one of the 19 winning a state championship, and everyone can be, you know, taking ownership and pride in those victories. And so, and I finally, I've always been a little bit of a uniform person. I have one school that the PTA voted to go to a uniform next year. And so I said, "Well, can I make a little suggestion? Can we put a little OCPS on the one sleeve?" Because, you know, within this political environment we're at, it's real, it is a matter of being proud of our whole district. Well, bright, because we know there's so many powers to be out there that, you know, basically don't want districts. They want every school to be the Walmart, the Target, the Kmart schools, and they don't want district schools. So I think it's important that our students really can take pride in the accomplishments of neighboring schools. So I am just thrilled with your group is doing, and I look forward to hearing more of the details as we move forward.
Great initiative, and I love the student advisory group that you've pulled together, Dr. Jenkins. I'm going to be a little bit of a wet rag and put in a plug, and the superintendent knows I've been asking for this. I just want to reiterate it in front of the board. All that being said, I, because we had our students do PSAs on student discipline and expulsions, and I think we need to continue doing that, but I've been suggesting to the superintendent that whether myself or her or school board members, I really do strongly believe, though, we need to start creating some PSAs that we require every high school to run at the beginning of the semester that are very simple, blunt, and to the point. That says things like, you know, if you bring drugs on campus, even if they're over the counter and we're not aware, you will be expelled. If you bring a weapon on campus, you will be expelled. If you deface another team's property, buildings, or mascot, you will be expelled. Because I don't think we're getting through to the kids that, you know, whether you still a $300 iPhone, or whether you bring over-the-counter drugs on campus, or you bring a four-inch knife on campus, you know, you're going to get expelled. And I just think that message really needs to be delivered with a heavy hand. It's going to make, if I do it, me the bad guy, or if Dr. Jenkins are Dr. Jenkins are the, you know, the heavy, but I just think they need to start hearing it in direct blunt terms that, because I'm just tired of expelling kids that, you know, them professing ignorance that they were going to get expelled for having those drugs on campus, or that knife on campus, or, you know, or defacing that totem pole, or spray painting the side of that school. Ms. Gould?
I'm going to go back the other way now, it's a little more touchy-feely, sorry. I had shared with Dr. Jenkins that at the NSBA conference, there was an absolutely amazing young speaker. She's actually a student. Her name is Adora Zvitak, and she's done a TED Talk. And she talks about student involvement. And if there was ever any way, if she's in this area, that we could get her as a speaker, she would not only be phenomenal for the kids, but for the adults involved in our school system. She really blew me away. And of course, she used her technology for her notes, and she was talking about the difference in communication. It was, it was really a great, but very positive talk. And her TED Talk is well worth the, well worth a look, so that might be something everybody could take a look at. But she kind of ties into this whole topic, if we can ever attract her maybe jointly with somebody else into the area.
All right, Dr. Jenkins, you had another item.
I do. I have provided for you both electronically and hard copy, and Dylan is actually posting to our website and placing on social media so that all of our community stakeholders, parents, and others will have access to the same document. We've had some discussions over the last couple of weeks with all of you individually regarding where the state is on testing. Gathered lots of thinking from you, certainly, and included your thoughts in this update. It's a good time to give an update. And I've also had conversation with folks from Tallahassee. There is another conference call in the morning, by the way, with DOE and superintendents. And so we've had discussions and, quite frankly, had some frustration at some limited or conflicting information that was being provided. And in that void, and I share the same with the commissioner, in that void, we have lots of announcements and decisions being made, and sometimes there are misunderstandings among districts and within our schools because of some of those announcements. So it's a good time for us to codify. I actually promised one of you that I would have maybe a half-page or so. This is a three-page document. I apologize. But I figure if we're going to try to at least have a good history of what has gone on, it's important, an important point to bring that back to focus. So what I provided for you is that actual memorandum from me. Hope that you will, most of you will post it to your webpages as well. We are publishing it through social media and to our webpage and to principals so that they can share it with teachers. It's a good history of where we are. And I apologize for the length of the document. You're looking like you can't find it. There was one at each, okay, okay. And then you have the electronic version as well, so you can post it or forward it as you see fit. So as you, let me just review it briefly. I won't read it to you, but April 9th, as you're well aware, is when the bill, CSHB 7069, was signed by the governor. It had a few impacts, changes to our accountability and evaluation system. I've listed three of them. One is allowing districts more flexibility in progress monitoring and decisions concerning remediation. Another is elimination, at least on the assessment-related requirements for our assessments. And thirdly, reducing the required minimum percentage of student learning growth scores on a teacher summative evaluation from 50 to 33%. I have at the very end of the memorandum, because I didn't want you to think I had forgotten, that bill also did make provisions for a later start date. Just so I can set that aside and get it out of the way, our calendar committee did meet, and they agree that they would make no recommendation to the board to change the start date for this year. They will potentially have additional discussions and want to take advantage of that for next year, but that is a part of the same actual bill that was signed into law. So let me go through, here are the challenges. As we've had these discussions, there are still some unanswered questions, such as, are districts permitted to base evaluations on a select number of students instructed by a teacher rather than all students instructed by a teacher? Very simple question, we believe, still remains unanswered. Number two, are districts permitted to use the results of reading and/or mathematics assessments to evaluate teachers, even if the teacher is not instructing a reading or mathematics course? Again, no clear answer yet. Thirdly, are there sanctions that will negatively impact the district? Pending those previous two questions. Still awaiting communication. We are told by DOE that at the May 6th FOIL meeting, and FOIL, in case folks are wondering, stands for Florida Organization of Instructional Leaders, at the May 6th meeting of FOIL, there will be DOE staff there to bring some clarity to this new legislation. They do qualify, however, and say, "We are not, we are still studying the bill. We cannot assure you that we will bring clarity around or conclusive information around all of the issues," but they will be in attendance. So in light of that lack of some clear direction, let me review the testing status here in OCPS and share how we want to proceed at this time. Testing, by the way, is currently going on. The timing of such announcements is certainly not optimal, because we are already in the testing windows. As we all know, testing also, not only is it currently taking place, in January, we administered hundreds of EOCs for those students who were in single semester courses. Majority of our courses are year-long. If you were in a single semester course, you took an EOC in January. Hundreds of those were administered. We are hearing and reading among about several districts with a variety of actions being taken at this point, largely due to that void from DOE. I want to say clearly, in fairness to the Department of Education, they are under the same bizarre time constraints that districts are under, very little time to interpret and give direction as well. So let's review where OCPS is. What actions have we taken to date? Because I think sometimes perhaps we are not as apt to provide as much PR behind our decisions, but I want everyone to understand, this board has taken significant action to date, including decreasing by 27 the number of assessments and benchmarks that we had back in October. It's 27. And then on March 19th, prior to legislation even being signed, March 19th, we eliminated 42 tests. That was where we put out information regarding all of our elementary EOCs, K through fourth, if you will remember. Note it below, that is cut and paste directly from that previous communication. And the ESE versions of tests as well. Forty-two tests were eliminated. I think people tend to forget, this board has taken aggressive action. Those 42 were prior to any signed legislation. So we, and I have the three bullets there for you just as a reminder, that's a communication that went out previously. Here's where we stand now. Announcements from some districts are actually indicating that they are doing what you already did back before spring break, eliminating some of those EOCs at the elementary level. We are aware that most of those districts are, however, still administering some kind of nationally purchased version or other version for their English language arts and their math in the elementary grades. In fact, one large district, when their information came out, had already administered the Stanford 10. We use ICTBS, but they're using the Stanford 10. They had already administered that for kindergarten through second-grade students for math and for reading. We're also aware that when it comes to art, music, and PE at the elementary level, some districts are reverting to giving those teachers the school-wide reading or math score. That is why we posed that question to DOE. Is it appropriate to give school-wide scores, even if that teacher does not actually instruct reading? We think that is not the intent, but it may be considered allowable. It may be considered allowable. At the secondary level, some districts seem to also be considering using reading data, but only for the specific students. And pardon me for giving you an example, because I used this early with another board member. So if I am a dance teacher, the roster of students that I am teaching for dance, in some instances, some districts may think it is allowable to use that same roster and just pull those students' reading scores. If they are in my class for some other course, that I can pull their reading scores, and that would, in essence, give me assessment data as an individual teacher. And in some instances, they are reverting back to having teachers create or use their own exams if no state exam is available. We are also well aware that some districts may not have had all of their EOCs created to meet the deadlines required nonetheless. And then other districts, of course, are planning to proceed with their EOCs as planned at this point. So let's get a focus about how OCPS might proceed. Number one, and I appreciate, Board Member Cobert actually provided you with copies of our resolution on testing, so you see that we are parallel to what this board has agreed to. Number one, we do support accountability. Assessment of student learning is appropriate. It helps inform instruction, and it provides some quality assurance in large urban districts. A common assessment does, that you are having similar information shared with your students across... similar information shared with your students across schools and across the district. It helps direct our professional development. It certainly is an area that we were commended for as we were reviewed for the Broad Prize. Common assessment is a healthy practice for a district our size and an urban district with mobility. Secondly, race to the top funds were used, and we assembled some of our best teachers to help create the test items based on the standards and the course content. Just to give you an indication, only 200 or so of our tests, of our 800 tests, had state item banks available for us. In those cases, teachers still participated in creating the blueprints or the assessment outlines for the exams. And all of the assessments were written with team members and a lead nominated by principals for expertise in their content areas. All teachers participating in the writing also went through specific training on constructing good items and assessments. This is an important point. Blueprints, we negotiated with our union, blueprints or the assessment outlines for every test were provided to all teachers in August. While the development of the items were held secure, everyone had an outline of the actual contents that would be included on the test. That was negotiated, required through our union. Thirdly, in OCPS, we replaced final exams with those tests. In other words, no teacher would be giving their own prepared final examinations because EOCs replaced final exams. I mentioned to you earlier, some districts were going to revert back to final exams. I don't want anyone to think we're doing final exams and EOCs. We replaced final exams with the EOCs. And our APIB, ACE, et cetera, students who have those kinds of tests are essentially not also taking an EOC. Number four, in some secondary schools, final examinations in the past have gone up to 120 minutes, meaning they took two class periods in some instances to complete them. Our final exams are 80 minutes at the high school and middle school, I'm sorry, 80 minutes at the middle school and 100 minutes at the high school. So as mentioned before, over 100 EOCs administered. Teachers and schools set those cut scores. Students received A, B, or C. calculation of 20% for their final exam, and those scales basically did no harm. In fact, we are told by our accountability team that no student dropped to an F due to an EOC grade at the semester, EOC exam at the semester break. So they, so we purposely calibrate them, and then the schools were able to calibrate very generously for our students. Reverting to the use, item six on page three, reverting to the use of reading or math scores for students in special areas or elective, I'm sorry, reverting to the use of reading or math scores of students for a special area or elective teacher's evaluation, while potentially allowable, and I say potentially because we may get clarification on May 5th. They know we are saying, you're going to have to be consistent. You got to say it so everyone is doing the same thing across the district. While it is allowable, may be allowable, we're concerned about the, whether or not it's equitable for our teachers. Because we believe teachers should be evaluated not only just for the students that they instruct, but also for the actual subject matter that they are instructing. Allow me an example once again. If I am an art teacher in an elementary school, and I have done a dynamic job of conveying my art curriculum to my students, that's really what I want to be evaluated on. If my school happens to be a school with lower reading scores, to give me those outcomes for my evaluation does not seem equitable, does not seem fair. Same would be true if I happen to be a music teacher at a school, and I'm not actually covering my curriculum well. I may not be doing such a bang-up job, but because my students are performing high school-wide in reading, I would get that higher assessment as well. It seems inequitable that you would make those divisions among our teachers. So we would like to see that the standards, that our evaluation is not only for the students that you teach, but also for your subject matter. Number seven, our MOE with CTA holds the student learning rating for all of our teachers at the effective level. That means we, in essence, have held our teachers harmless for the two years of our implementation. The state may not have been happy with that initially, but they agreed, our plan was approved, that our teachers are in the quote-unquote "held harmless." And I want to talk about how we have tried to do the same for students in just a moment. So where do we go moving forward? How do we try to at least be thoughtful as well as strategic rather than reactive? Because some reaction may have to be undone and redone, as we've seen previously with the state. Here's what we think. We think OCPS should consider exactly what we asked the state to do in their testing. And quite frankly, my prediction at this point, because of all of the issues that have arisen, I'm still hopeful that the state will have to revert to considering this first year of their administration of the new test to be baseline. That's what we want to do here in OCPS, to make those baseline. Secondly, we really want to move away from the notion of EOCs. It's almost a bad word. I do think we can have common final exams. Our teachers are giving final exams anyway. We can have some common final exams for our students, and no double testing, no double jeopardy for our students. At the same time, I think we have to reinforce that that information, those secure pieces of information can be used to inform instruction and to direct our professional development, not only for the new standard, but for other curriculum areas. We can help direct our professional development and inform our instruction going forward. I think we have to remind teachers as well that they are by union MOU held harmless for the first two years. More importantly, I think this baseline year, we can also use as an opportunity for feedback, both from teachers on those blueprints, feedback from students on actually taking the exams, and further information for our instruction. Want to stress again, all of the blueprints were provided by union agreement. The outline of what was going to be on the test were provided, but it's an opportunity for us. And I should mention, our testing and accountability department keeps a log. When they get a call from someone who says, here was a concern on a test, or a student came up and said, one of the questions was incomplete, then they log that information and will continue to gather. It will certainly remind teachers and schools that they need to call in if they have any of those concerns. Here's what I want to say about student outcomes, because I want to get a similar cushion and protection for our students during baseline development of the final exams as well. And I want to move towards saying they're just common final exams. We are very interested in, our initial look shows that we have not had negative impact, significant impact at that 20% mark. I think we have to look retrospectively to make sure we are not impacting students for initial implementation. If we want baseline, if we want to gather intel and even improve those secure tests, and I think we need to look to make sure we negate any negative impact on our students. As I said, teachers and schools were very generous, setting those cut scores. They gave out mostly As, Bs, and Cs for those final exams. No failures based on those final exams, but we need to look at that retroactively and going forward to make sure we're cushioning our students from any negative impact during development and baseline. Lastly, and this is information that folks will be certainly interested in, I've asked staff to review and to continue to review, do we have any other potential tests that we can eliminate while we're still trying to be, have some consistency for our teacher needs and the evaluation system? And they've initially identified about 15 additional exams that we believe can be eliminated. They will continue to go through that information. I have to tell you, any school that is a TIF grant school cannot essentially have any of their EOCs eliminated. They are required to administer their EOCs. We also intend to decrease, I'm almost done, I promise, we also intend to decrease our formative assessments, those benchmark assessments, because we are given that flexibility, we can eliminate some of those going forward as well. We will need to evaluate the board rules. They are coming to town. Folks need to be present and listening and giving input when they come to town for input on state board rules. They are required by statute by August 1st to have some guidelines in place. And then eventually, the school board is supposed to take up policy, once all the dust settles, policy around evaluation and assessment. We will look forward to the FOIL conference and any additional communication that we get from the state. We will certainly tune in to the conference call tomorrow morning for any additional guideline or direction from the state. But this is where I believe we can at least, with some confidence, at least plant our feet today. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. And did I hear you correctly, is the state board coming to hold a meeting? I missed it.
The right terminology. Come down, Dr. McElvey. Give them the date and the right terminology.
On May 13th, there's just, there's been a notice of rulemaking on the two rules that Dr. Jenkins mentioned have to be heard by the State Board of Education, and rules have to be adopted by August 1st. One is on the uniform submission, evaluation, and monitoring of evaluation plans for both instructional administrative employees. And the other is on a uniform set of cut scores that districts have to use for the statewide value-added model. So for teachers who are teaching statewide courses, there are going to be one set of cut scores that will be used for all districts. Those are both going to be in three sets. They do rulemaking sessions across the state, so they try to go to one place in South Florida, one place in Central Florida, one place in North Florida. They're going to be coming to Central Florida on May 13th at 9:00 in the morning, and that'll be in the boardroom. When we have the rule text, the rule text is not available at this time. When the rule text is available, we'll make sure to provide it to a superintendent with the analysis.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. McGill, can you put that on our calendars, just so we all make that possible? All right. Thank you for that explanation and recommendation, Dr. Jenkins. Ms. Cobert?
Okay. Thank you, Chairman. Most of you know, I've been working on this a lot. The governor signed this piece of legislation only two weeks ago. And I want to make a point, that it took eight to 10 years for the state to get us to this point. And we've had, we've been handed this to do a lot of corrective action, and it's only been two weeks. It's important to me, I've said this at this board table many times, that we are thoughtful and purposeful when we make decisions, that we don't make, take knee-jerk reactions. The last couple of days, I've been going through all of the other counties that have come out and made public announcements about what they're doing. It's all over the board. Some, in fact, the majority of the counties, 67 counties, are taking no action and proceeding with what they have already in place. What was interesting to me is that many of the counties who came out and said, we are eliminating all end-of-course exams, that was an announcement, but I wanted to know what their plan was behind it, because you can't make an announcement without a plan. Many of them are still using final exams, so they're ending end-of-course exams, but they're still requiring final exams, whether those are county-generated or teacher-generated, they're still requiring the final exams. Some of them are going back and reverting to using student reading scores in teacher evaluations. So, and I'm not really okay with that, because that's something that we actually had said we thought was, was not right, that it was unethical to use, if you're a history teacher, or you are an art teacher, that we're going to use reading scores, whether they're school-wide reading scores or your own students' reading scores. I'm not okay with that. So we have to figure out some way. So then, you know, and just the eliminating, elimination of testing is not really the way to go. I mean, testing has a purpose. And what we have said all along is that testing's not the issue. It's the high-stakes nature of testing that we want to get rid of. We want to go back to testing being evaluative, to inform instruction, to be a good device that we use for our students. In fact, there was a letter from a student in the Orlando Sentinel, I think it was just yesterday, and the student said, I'm in favor of taking final exams. Final exams aren't punishments for students. The final exam includes everything you've learned throughout the semester on one test, and this is important. But, but the issue is how we use it. So went back to our board's resolution, which I gave you all a copy of, and I thought, whatever we do, it needs to be in line, in line with what we ask the state to do or the state not to do. So in that resolution, it talks about, you know, when we talk about what we want out of an accountability and testing system, we want there, it not to be high stakes. We wanted whatever we use the first couple of years, and we said one year, but I'd say, I would venture to say, we would really like it to be the first couple of years, for these tests to be field-tested, so that we make sure they're doing what they say they do, that they're aligned with the curriculum, that our testing, what is the purpose? That it should be to inform instruction, and it should be for quality assurance, to make sure our kids are learning what they should be learning. We also found it very important, and this is in here, that we hold harmless. It was important to hold teachers harmless, which we have already found a way to do, and to hold students harmless with testing. And finally, to minimize as much as possible the number of tests that our students take. So then we have the memo from Superintendent today, and we did talk about this a lot. Couple of comments. I want to reiterate, many of these other districts who have announced that they're eliminating end-of-course exams are going back to using reading scores. I am not okay with that. We need to find a way to evaluate students and teachers on the course material they're actually learning and that they're actually teaching. As far as our final exams, I think we need to discuss if this is going to be, let's say, a field test year and a benchmark year. I'm sorry, is my time up? Okay. All right. We need to talk about how much they're going to count for students, if it's going to be a field test year. It's very important that we give teachers a say. So if they're, we're using common final exams, it'll be very important during this year or two-year process to give teachers a mechanism to give feedback on these tests. So they're part of, our own teachers have been a part of developing these tests, but it's an unknown for most of the teachers out there. There needs to be a very specific mechanism for teachers to provide feedback after this year and next, so that we make sure we're getting it right, and that we're all doing it together, so our teachers have buy-in. I think another important thing, we need to, we are now allowed to use proctors more. I think we need to make sure that we're doing that as much as possible, whether we're not pulling our actual teachers out to proctor the state EOCs or the FSAs. I think that's important. I want to commend the superintendent. Some of what these other districts are doing now in their announcements are what we did in March, that we went out on a limb, and we were leaders because of the amount of tests that we eliminated on the elementary level. But now it's important to really look and scrutinize at the, at the secondary level. So, let's see, what else do I have? The other thing is, is that when it comes to the FSA, one of the things we will be doing as we go forward is looking at the validity of that test. And so as we look at the validity of that test, we also need to come up with a plan. So if it's looking like it's not valid, and we've had so many problems with that test, I'm extraordinarily unhappy with the state and how that test has gone down. We need to look at, what do we ask for? Do we, why can't we use nationally-recognized, norm-referenced tests like the ACT, the SAT, the Stanford 10, the Iowa, the PSAT? Why can't we use those? And that's something, another issue, as we go forward, and we continue to develop this plan, because I think this is in flux right now. I think what you have here is a great start, but we, as a district and as a board, need to continue over the next couple of months revising the plan and continuing to advocate on a state level for a plan that works for all of us. And you also said on here that you have 15 exams that can be eliminated now. You're also decreasing benchmarks next year, and you may recommend additional eliminations. I think we make that a priority as far as the number of tests that we eliminate. And I think with these, with these issues, we're going to be in line with what we said are our values as far as our resolution. I think the one thing we really do need to talk about is the amount that the common final exams will count for our students, because as you mentioned, many students already took a final or an EOC in January. If we, if we make that count for 10% this year, or not at all, and make it a pure field test benchmark year, then what, what happens to those students who already took it in January? We need to go back and look at whether or not- We need to go back and look at whether or not that's equitable, or can we? Because my number one, number one, number one thing is holding our students harmless. They've been through enough with all this testing and all the changes with testing and the amount of testing, and we're trying to clean this up. So how do we hold our students harmless and make sure that the testing that we go forward with is only for the correct, for the right purpose? How much is it going to count this year? I think it really does need to be a field testing year, because that's what we were asking from the state. But, but what do we also do retroactively with those students who took those tests in the first semester? And I would also very much encourage our, our wonderful parent advocates to come back and participate on the, in that May 13th meeting, because so much of what we have is a result of, of state mandates, and we need to continue to advocate on that level. So the flexibility that we have, we're going to use to hold students harmless, to reduce the number of tests, but we need a lot more clarity from the Board of Education, and we're not getting it. I know that superintendent has asked for clarity, and we are not getting it. So we need to continue to advocate at that level as well. So I know, I know I've covered a lot of things, and I'm, I'm all over the place. But for me, those are, those are the priorities, holding students harmless, making this a, a field testing year, advocating for more flexibility on, on the state level, and remembering that some of this we did do, all of the elementary level we did do. But we need to look at that secondary and what we're going to do with those common final exams this year.
Thank you, Ms. Coburn. Mrs. Robinson.
Thank you, Ms. Coburn, for always being so, I mean, you just are all-encompassing. I love it. And I agree with everything that Ms. Coburn has said, and I thank you, Dr. Jenkins, for bringing this to us tonight and having it be a place where we can start this conversation and having a, and suggesting it be a baseline this year and next. And I have some questions. I had tons of questions. I do have tons of questions. Some of them were answered. We've, we've been getting emails, not many, which has been amazing. I have been getting emails, and I've been going back and forth pretty in-depth with several of the people, and it's been really wonderful. The dialogue's been great. But my main concern in reading this was to, to one of Ms. Coburn's points, how will we hold the students harmless? And how can we, during this baseline time this year, how can we, if we decide to adjust the 20% for middle school and high school down to 10 or zero, whichever, how can we go back and, and potentially retroactive? The year's not over yet. Potentially retroactively change the ones, the students that have already taken them. I mean, my son, my son took two in January. He survived. It, it didn't kill us. But anyway, so before the end of the school year and those grades are final, I wish, I hope we can come up with a plan of action and figure that out. Some questions that I keep having a lot of conversation with a good friend of mine about the elementary. It seems to me most people are more concerned about the elementary common final idea than they are middle school and high school, because middle school and high school, it's been more common to have a final. But, but elementary, it's not. And in particular, they are, they're very, they seem very concerned about the PE, music and art, mostly music and art. You know, PE that you, most schools, you see your PE teacher every day, but in music and art, you don't see them every day necessarily. And in some of our larger schools, you don't see them often at, at all. Have you even had, has a teacher even had enough time to get the standards taught this year? So there's, that's, that's where people are concerned. And then, and the Iowa, I know that's our plan, but you know, there's some confusion about ITBS versus Iowa. Is it the same thing? Isn't it the same thing? I've, I've been seeing some emails go back and forth about that. The schools are, I'm not sure the schools really know which it is. I guess we'll figure that out when we do it here in a few weeks. But where are we going to set those proficiency scores for those, you know, for the elementary in particular, for the teachers' evaluations? Does the Iowa slash ITBS, do they have a proficiency score already built in? Do we come up with that? Do we have to, do we have to negotiate that with our union? I mean, I, there's just so many questions for me surrounding the Iowa and surrounding the end-of-course finals for the elementary specials. Several of the questions that I had that came to me from, from teachers, and these were middle school teachers, and I think middle school teachers just, I guess in high school, not, I haven't had a single thing from a high school teacher. They're used to giving finals. It's just the way it is. I mean, we, we all had finals. Finals are finals. These just had the name end-of-course, which made them appear different. And the difference in them, and we've discussed this before, the difference in the finals you all of us took versus these finals, is they aren't teacher-created, they're district-created. And that does, that's why they're called common finals, why we're going to call them common finals. But that is the mystery around it. That's what has people nervous. The middle school teachers are the ones I'm hearing about that are really nervous, because it isn't as common necessarily in middle school to have finals. So it's something new for them. They're very nervous. And several of them were concerned, just because it's new, about the validity of these district-created finals. You know, they'd heard stories about, oh, one person made the entire final. I know her. She was a teacher at such-and-such, and I've heard that she was, she made it by herself. And I know I asked you about that, Dr. Jenkins, but if you could address that, that, that they're not, it's not one person sitting in a room creating these district-created finals. It's, it's a, there's a review process, and there are more than one person. But we have so many courses that, that might only have, might only impact a small number of students. So I guess it is kind of different. You can't bring in 20 experts when there aren't really 20 experts on that one small thing. So those are some of the concerns. And then in one, some of the conversation I've had with one person very in-depth is, is more around, not necessarily the, the details of all of this, but just the atmosphere that surrounds this high-stakes testing that's out there, that the FSA, the stand, the state required, end-of-course exams, and, and now our common finals. The atmosphere that's out in the schools, and, and I, I've tried to explain this to them. We all go to our schools. You know, I've got the 26 schools, I go on their campuses. And it's interesting to me how different schools, the atmosphere's totally different. Some schools, it's very laid back. I think it's principal-driven. Is the principal laid back about it? Do they feel like a team? Do they all feel like they're working together on this? Or is the principal totally freaked out? And, and it's going down to the teachers, therefore to the students? So one person used the term, and I, and I'm pretty sure, Dr. Jenkins, that you were copied on this email, that data meetings are seen as blood baths, and, and the, the stress and the anxiety that surrounds these, the, the pressure coming from the top down is so severe. And I just want us to kind of, I don't know how real that is. I, I'm not in those data meetings. I don't know. I wonder how we can, because we have to implement these tests, we have to administer them by law. How, what can we do? What's the part we can play as a district to make it? My goal for all of this, wouldn't it just be lovely for all of us if at the end of the school year, you just gave your test and you were done? And don't wrap the whole year around the test? I mean, isn't that the goal? In that, you, you have standards, you teach the standards, you teach them however the teacher feels like teaching the standards, and then the teacher gets evaluated on how well our students did on the, on the test? I mean, that's, that's the goal of all of this. So how can we, as a district, hold to that? I mean, we even have it in our, in our accountability statement. Yeah, our resolution. What did you say? Our Bible. But I mean, it talks about the, the appropriateness. I can't, I'm not going to, I can't find it now that I'm, but the, for the students, you know, that being age-appropriate exams and how, and, and I think some of it is just, how can we relieve some of the stress everyone's feeling? Because we have to administer these tests. So that's a conversation. I don't know the answer, and I'm not sure you know the answer. But, so I just, and I would love for you to investigate the blood baths, and if, if it's really happening. I, I don't know. So anyway, I just, I've enjoyed the conversation with the people I've talked to this week, because it is good to hear from different perspectives. You know, I, I'm still a mom, and I, I still do have a student taking some of these. But it is different, and I think, I think the elementary piece is what has a lot of people extremely nervous. So anyway, thank you very much for coming up with a plan, and I agree, it's going to have to be fluid. And I agree with you that we're going to have to wait and see what the DOE says. So, thank you.
Dr. Jenkins, I'm going to go to you to address those and hand the gavel temporarily to Ms. Flynn.
Okay. So just a couple of things, Ms. Robinson, I, I think, let me talk about your last item first, around the data meetings and the feeling of pressure there. That will be eliminated, because the state under this new statute has removed or given us flexibility around what we call progress monitoring. So progress monitoring was required if you've got levels ones and twos, which every school has some level one and twos. Progress monitoring is now being backed down on the, the requirements. And so there won't be the need or the existence of as many formative assessments as we've had in the past. The benchmark testing will be significantly decreased, which means, in essence, but I want you, I want you to know that in some of our schools where we know we've got a struggling population, they live by that monitoring. They've got to be able to track their students. But there is no longer a requirement that we have to do it in all of our schools. So I think you'll see a significant decrease in benchmark and, and formative assessment, which means the data meetings also go away. That does mean, in essence, that teachers are just responsible for covering those standards. And at the end of the year, whether you've been given, you can use your own assessments to determine whether or not the students are learning, and then at the end of the year, you have the actual accountability measure. So once the formative and benchmark testing is narrowed to a smaller number, the data meetings will be narrowed as well. It's an important point. Secondly, and I'm going to let Brandon speak to the Iowa test, as well as test item creation in a moment, let me speak to art, music, and PE in particular. Those concerns, or even elementary schools, those concerns about validity, that's why we have to remind folks, we are looking at baseline years. For two years, we've negotiated, there is no impact on teachers. And so some things we will have to grow or get better at. For art, music, and PE, we've tried to condense our scheduling options. You, you saw this in the board update. Tried to consolidate scheduling. Large districts normally do this, rather than having 184 different schedules, I'm sorry, 123 different schedules at the elementary level. We've tried to help them build into templates, so that art, music, and PE teachers are getting consistent instructional time, even if it's a larger school. That's something we've worked on quite adamantly in the last few weeks. And so hopefully by the time we look at schedules for next year, an art teacher at a large school will have similar access to her students as an art teacher in a smaller school. So, so that we're working on as well. Dr. McKelvey, if you would talk to, speak to the Iowa test and the test item creation. I, I mentioned this to Ms. Robinson earlier. Teachers are not actually sitting down and creating tests, they are helping to develop test items. And then we have staff that, that work with them and actually pull from those test items to create the actual test. So start there, Dr. McKelvey, and then go on to the Iowa test.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. You're absolutely right, Board Member Robinson, when you're talking about the tests, the test items. We have to use the teachers who are available, who teach the course and have expertise in the course. In some cases, there may be hundreds of teachers who teach a particular course code. In some cases, there is only one teacher who teaches it. In some cases, there's only one teacher who teaches it, and there's not even anyone else in the district who has experience teaching the course. In some cases, may not even have experience speaking the language, at least at the particular level you need to write the assessment with. So it was important to us that we tried to use as, as good security and as good process as possible. So let's say, and this is just an example, that we're doing a test, and I'm going to try to think of a language we're not giving, because I don't want to call out a teacher or anything. So let's say we're doing a language, I don't, do we have a Greek assessment? Okay, Servo-Croatian. Thank you, Frank. So let's say we're doing a Servo-Croatian assessment, right, where we only have one teacher in the district who has that. They wouldn't be on an island, though. All the other teachers who are doing foreign language assessments would have been brought into the session with them, maybe teachers that were teaching similar foreign languages being that. And then we would have also had our foreign language curriculum person who is there to help them and provide some guidance as well. In an ideal world, you want that PLC kind of environment, right, where you're be able to help each other, look at each other's items and do like that. So we had to be somewhat flexible with the type of review that we had. And on the other side, you could imagine with Servo-Croatian, Croatian as well, a little bit difficult for our personnel to provide the same support in examining the items as you might for another assessment. But then we may do and try to find someone else, or find someone who's able to edit pieces of it. So we did have to have, you know, a scale of support that depended on what the assessment was and how many people were available to write it. But we made sure that there was a consistent standard of support that we were able to provide to everything. And as Dr. Jenkins said, we relied very heavily on the work of our teachers, because for about three-quarters of the assessments, there weren't even items to start off as a base from the state. So it really had to be that work. So they had to do a tremendous amount of the lifting as well, because there just wasn't that base that was provided in those courses. So I hope that helps on the first question. So the Iowa assessments, I, I know I've tried to answer some questions on this as well. I know there was question, there were questions this weekend as well. One of the questions that I think has been most confusing is there was a name and content change to what used to be the Iowa Test of Basic Skills and is now called the Iowa Assessments. So when we change our assessment, and a great example is when we went from FCAP 1.0 to 2.0, we changed the standards, and then we kind of just tweaked the name from 1.0 to 2.0. We still kind of called it the FCAP. Iowa Test of Basic Skills did receive a content change. It also received a name change. See, the Iowa Assessments. So it is a different assessment, but it is the same in the sense that it's still a nationally-norm reference assessment that's made by kind of a very reputable assessment group that's Riverside, it's close to the University of Iowa. We've also been receiving a lot of detailed questions about elements of the assessments, reliability statistics, validity statistics, other information like that. We've attempted to provide anything that we can find that's available by the test company. Test companies differ a little bit in what information they make available. We're a public school district, so whenever we go out for an assessment, it goes through an RFP process. We have to choose from the companies that provide that. Different companies provide different things for their assessments. We really appreciate the questions from parents that we've received about, do you know this exactly? Do you know this exactly? Where are these specific statistics? Where, where could we find this information? We've had to go to find some of these things, and some of these things we can find, and some of these things just aren't publicly available. Certainly not a reason to stop asking, you know, either from our parents or from the board members. Whenever there's a question that we can't answer about an assessment, and that absolutely happens, not just because it's a complex area, but because we're dealing with proprietary products in many ways as well, we'll always do what we can to answer that. It doesn't mean that it's always going to be available, but we're always going to do our best to make sure we go to the limits of what we can get from the testing companies.
Dr. McKelvey, would you clarify as well, the Iowa test is what we've used for third-grade retention retesting as well? Just say a word about that.
Sure. We, we have a history of using either Iowa Test of Basic Skills or Iowa Assessments for years in the district. We've been using it for the Teacher Incentive Fund, so we've been using it for our TIF schools for a while. We've also been using it, as Superintendent Jenkins has mentioned, for Good Cause. So for grade-three students who don't meet the requirement to receive a Level 2 or higher on the assessment in order to be promoted automatically to the next grade, you're allowed to receive a certain score on a nationally-norm reference test to then receive promotion through a Good Cause exemption. For the school district, again, through the RFP process, the Iowa Assessment is the school, the assessment that we're currently using for that. So it has a history of being used in the district as well. And our schools have at least some experience with the interpretation of the assessment.
Do these have proficiency rates already built in, like a, a score of pass/fail or something for the purposes of evaluating the teacher?
So when we usually talk about passing or failing, we're talking about criterion-reference tests, right? We're talking about an assessment where student scores may range, but we go out of our way to say, and this is the border of a Level 1 and 2, and this is a border of a Level 2 and 3. The Iowa Assessment is a norm-referenced assessment, so that's why you hear things expressed in percentiles. You did better than 70% of the students who took the test. You did better than 30% of the students. So that means it doesn't come prepackaged with a particular criterion. But for the purpose of using teacher evaluation, sometimes we need to think about it the way we think about the statewide value-added models. What isn't important is that what percentage of students you got to proficient, but how much growth the students much growth the student showed over the course of the year. So, we try to mimic that whenever possible. Again, the Superintendent Jenkins, and I know a couple of you have already commented on this idea of equity and trying to make sure that our evaluation system is as equitable as possible. And one of the ways that we ensure equity in the evaluation system is making sure that it's based on growth rather than some target of proficiency, wanting to make sure that every student is able to show growth, and wanting to make sure that students, teachers are held accountable for growth rather than hitting a predetermined target. That's what our statewide system does with student learning growth. We try to do that with our local system whenever possible as well.
Thank you, Dr. McKelvey. All right. Thank you, Mrs. Robinson. Well, I'll weigh in next, and I'm going to bounce all over the place here, Board Members, forgive me. And Ms. Colbert, your thoughts were wonderfully well-organized and cogent, and you came prepared. Mine are not as much so. So, if I seem to bounce like a pinball from bumper to bumper, just bear with me, but I think we're all probably going to end up weighing in on this eventually. I think the direction we're headed in, Dr. Jenkins, is a good direction. I support it, as you've laid out tonight. I think we need to hear more. I do agree completely then in a district such as ours with the extremely high mobility that we have in our district, that frankly, I think it's fair not only to the student, but to their family and to the teacher whose pay is being based on that assessment to have a common final, because it does assure some commonality as those students oftentimes, as we all too well know on this board, can sometimes move two, three, four times a year in a single school year. And, you know, early on in my involvement with Orange County Public Schools, you know, that was a big issue that we have addressed over the last 10 years, but portfolios, for example, moving with students and students being able to pick up seamlessly when they get to a new school. And I think it's important for anybody that's watching this or listening to know that it's not hyperbole to say that we literally have hundreds, if not thousands, of students who do move two to three times per year routinely, year in and year out. So, I support that. I'm totally opposed, and I agree with Superintendent, to basing a teacher's evaluation upon a reading score if that's not the topic they teach. You know, and frankly, I would think that's totally inequitable, unfair, as long as we have a merit pay law on the books where the assessment of the student and whether that student is showing learning gains is part of the teacher's pay. I think it's absolutely imperative that we have some type of assessment that assesses that teacher on what they are teaching and not on a course that they are not teaching. So, for those districts that have gone to that system, frankly, if I were representative of the teachers in those districts, I would be very, very unhappy, because we're reverting to a system where their pay is being based on something that they simply don't test. I've weighed in with Superintendent on this. I think she's putting together, she may have already sent it to me today, and I didn't get it. I know it may be expensive to come up with proctors during testing season, but if there is a top-three issue for me, and I'm going to have to be dissuaded mightily with cost, I don't want to say I would spend anything to do it, but I would spend pretty much close to anything to do it. We have got to figure out a way to pay for non-teacher proctors to administer these tests. I am so tired of hearing, and I think it's valid criticism, my wife, my children, our friends, our friends' children, talk about school pretty much shutting down for four or five weeks and no learning or teaching going on in the classroom because the teachers are proctoring for four straight weeks, five straight weeks, six straight weeks. And it's gone beyond the realm of anecdote to me. I don't think it's anecdotal. I think it's real, and I think that we've got to make sure that instruction is continuing in the classroom during the testing season. I'm sure there's incredible variability from school to school. I'm sure that some principals are very good at making sure teachers are in the classroom and still instructing, but I think there are probably other principals that are not as good as it, at it. And that learning grinding to a halt during testing season is simply unacceptable to me. I completely support field testing, as you've proposed, Dr. Jenkins, and the more we can hold harmless as we roll out these tests, the better. I think it's what this state should have done. You know, I need to be educated more by Dr. McKelvey and Mr. Gilbert and others, and I mean that sincerely. So, I hope you all are not shy about making an appointment, coming in and seeing me on anything I say here, or anybody on your staff up there where it's clear from what I say from the DIES, where I need a little bit more education. Because what I'm about to say, y'all may disagree with or you may agree with it, but I have great reluctance using personally, and this is not part of your recommendation, Dr. Jenkins, but if we end up going in a direction where we use the SAT or the ACT or the Iowa Assessment or the Stanford Assessment as a substitute for common finals or for our own created test, I'm going to really need to be convinced of that, because I don't think that's the purpose of the SAT. And if teacher pay is based on that, then we're going to start teaching to the SAT and teaching to the ACT and teaching to the Iowa Assessment, teaching to the Stanford Assessment or whatever other test we use. I'm not familiar with those other tests, but I'm very familiar with the SAT and very, very familiar, because my daughter is about to take it for the fourth time, the ACT. And, you know, those are, those are used to measure readiness for college, but they're used to measure it in a very, I know this is not a testing term, Dr. McKelvey, so forgive my misappropriating it, but they're used to measure things, everything from vocabulary to reading comprehension to analytical and logical skills. That doesn't mean that they're used to measure pure mastery of algebra or trigonometry or pure measury of English Lit or pure measury of American history. I, you know, those districts are going to those college entrance exams as their assessment instruments. Again, you know, if I had someone smarter than me, and there's a lot of folks in this room smarter than me on this topic, to come and say, no, no, it's actually a good measure, I'd be open-minded, but I'd really have to be convinced of that, because I just don't think that's a proper use of those tests. I think teacher fairness is a very, very big part of this. That's why I'm supportive of where we're going. And I think that the, you know, those who really have issues with testing in general need to realize that there is an aspect of teacher fairness in this, because we are bound by the merit pay law of the state, and an assessment is part of the merit pay law, and it is a built-in part, even though it was just amended to lower the percentage, but it is a built-in part of the teacher pay. Lastly, and this is totally off the reservation as well, but I've shared this with Dr. Jenkins, I think the one thing that we never talk about up here, at least I've never heard it brought up, that I'm going to bring up is what really gives parents heartburn over these tests is not having the test results shared with them so they can work with their children on improving their children's performance on the test. I know that's a big issue, because I know a lot of work and effort and goes into those tests, and I know that you destroy the efficacy of the test if you have to throw it out each year and start anew. But I don't know if there is a way to do, say, for example, what the SAT does and what the ACT does, where you can give parents on an assessment categories of how their student performed. For example, when you get your ACT results, it says that you got nine out of 12 questions right in the analytical reasoning section, or you got eight out of 10 questions right in the reading comprehension portion. So, you know where your students' weaknesses are, and if you're like me and you have a high school student and you're trying to help them get a good ACT score, you can have their tutor or whatever work with them on the area that they're consistently scoring poorly in. I think we've got to figure out a way to do that. I don't know how. I don't, you know, I don't know, but, but we've got to have a way to figure out how to sit down, because most of our parents, I'd like to believe, are engaged, and they want to make sure that their student performs at a high level, but they get very frustrated. And then, y'all's nods tell me that you've heard this frustration too. You know what? We were told that they did this or that, but we're not told what they missed or what they did poorly on or what we need to work with our kid on. And, you know, a lot of teachers are good at getting with the parent and letting them know that, but I think we need a little bit more transparency there. So, those are my thoughts. Thank you for entertaining them, and let me turn it over to you for yours, Ms. Gold. Dr. Jenkins?
Thank you, Chairman. I just was going to make two points for you. $544,000 is the cost for the Kelly subs for proctoring in place of teachers and other staff. I want to make sure folks understand, other staff besides teachers are proctoring as well. But about $544,000 is the estimate of what it would cost to hire Kelly subs for the proctoring. I especially like your comment about the feedback. Brandon and his staff are looking at ways to get additional feedback, because we have the actual blueprints and a matching of test items to the actual curriculum or to the standards and the course content. I think that's something we can potentially work on, so I'm glad you brought that up for the rest of the group to hear. And just interestingly enough, some of the, some of our neighboring districts are actually putting in a request to the department that they will be allowed to not participate in FSA, and instead of FSA, actually use SAT and ACT as well. I think, I think that is just as problematic as what you've, as what you've brought up, though. I wanted to add that to the concerns.
Well, and frankly, that's why I made that comment, because I knew of that, and I just, I don't support that. And we haven't suggested going there, but let me say this, for me alone, and I'm not speaking, obviously, for anybody on this board, $544,000 is money well spent. And, you know, and I think that if we went out to our parents and said, hey, and I'm not saying it would come from this source, Dr. Jenkins, but hey, you know that one mill you supported? Because I think this would be an appropriate use of that, not necessarily completely recurring funds, because it will expire, but we want to spend $544,000 of it to make sure that instruction's continuing in the classroom. I would defend that till, till the cows come home myself. Ms. Gold?
I'm not going to repeat what others have said. You've all articulated it very well. I have probably more off-the-reservation comments. I'll start, actually, with the proctoring. I had brought this up before, and I think it would help on two points that I wanted to highlight. The, on the proctoring, is there a way that we could take non-instructional staff, especially from the district offices, and have them cross-utilize like Disney does during their peak times? They still have to bring in seasonal staff to supplement, but it, it sends the message and it also puts people who are not in regular contact at the front line in touch with the front line, which brings me to the second point. You all know that I have what I call table talks once a month, and I alternate my months. Well, this month was staff, and I had a couple of teachers approach me, and they're not, they're tired, but they're not fully getting the communication that, one, we appreciate them, or that, two, that the central office staff truly understands what they're going through. And I don't think that's the case. I think that not only do we have empathy and sympathy, but we're living it with them here at the central district office, but I don't think they perceive that. And so, if there is some way to beef up the communications, not just in the sense of giving them the facts, which this does, and what we're trying to do to move forward, but how much we appreciate them for sticking this out with us and as we work through it with the state, I think that's vitally important. And I don't think we can say thank you often enough between now and the last day of school and the beginning of the next school year. It's just been a tough year all the way around, and that's not just teachers. That is all the way to the bus drivers, because they feel the stress. That is just through and through. So, that was that piece. And also, what else? I am asked constantly, specifically, what do you want me to advocate for? I don't have trouble picking up my, the phone to the legislators. I don't have trouble, you know, going to, to Washington if we have to. But specifically, how do we keep in line and keep that pressure on? So, I think the more we can continually articulate, especially as we go into the summer months, this is, this is not going to be the end. This is the beginning of really the evolution of this new accountability system that we're going into. You said it very well. It took 10 years to get here, and now we have this two-month timeframe where we have to get it all right, two weeks, just like at the beginning of the year, we had a couple of weeks to get all the benchmark tests done with zero direction. So, it's that same thing. We're going to continue to work through these issues and right-size it for our kids and our future, but I think we need to have communication points that are very well articulated out between now, the end of this session, and the beginning of the next session, so that it's not just during session that they're hearing these things, but we continue to indicate. The other thing, and this is because I have a legislator that I work with that's particularly interested in this area, is will the changes that you're presenting for those non-core classes really be able to bring back with comfort things like the choir and the, those programmatic that we didn't know how to evaluate a teacher? And I know we're moving in that direction, but how do we give them comfort that it's okay to bring that stuff back and you're not going to get dinged as a school and a teacher? Like show choir, like I've heard that some things are, we were talking about the science labs earlier. Those things that, you know, there's not necessarily a direct class. It may be an extracurricular. It may be after school. It may be a class they take, but it's, you know, they're an engineering major, but this, they have an affinity and a talent, and it's an outlet for them. Drama, you know, those programs that kind of come up that got squished down, they didn't get fully eliminated across the board, but they were definitely squished down, and I think they're still feeling squished. How do we help them bring those things back that keep kids in school and engaged and excited about coming to school, especially during particularly tough times? It's the time they go let off that steam and, and do something that takes them out of the study mode, especially as sophomores and juniors, when they're not only in our test modes, but they are taking ACTs and SATs and sometimes two or three times and other assessments. And if they're in AP classes like mine, he's got four AP tests coming up. I mean, if he didn't have orchestra, I think he'd explode in gaming, but that's a little difficult, because I have his chord right now. So, so it's just so intense. So, those are the things that were on my list, the proctor, those other things. How do we communicate? How do we give a lot of love? And, you know, I think we are going in the right direction. We're going to need to continue to tweak, tweak, tweak.
Dr. Jenkins?
Thank you, Ms. Gold. Just two quick comments. We do have some central office, office staff that do proctoring, but because any of our adults in central office positions, if they will go through the training, just very brief training and preparation, there is no reason why we can't use some additional or count on additional professional staff to go out and help with proctoring. That will certainly cut the cost as well, so let us take a look at that. But I do want you to know, we have assistants and proctors that go out to help. The notion of expanding again some of those electives, I want you to keep in mind, the narrowing was due to low enrollment of some of those courses. I believe what we used to try to narrow it down is if you had fewer than 100, then it's probably not, district-wide, then it's probably not significant enough. Yeah, so let us go back and take a look at that. There was one very popular one, I won't say it, because it's named after a television show, but, but there was one in particular that was popular. We'll go back and take a look, certainly not that they don't, it wasn't just that they didn't have to have EOCs, though. The, really, the notion was, we were sort of being extremely creative with some television shows and things, and we wanted to make sure we were having pretty solid curriculum there. So, we'll, we'll take a look at that as well.
And I think we had a lot of fight-or-flight reaction at the beginning of all this, especially at the beginning of the school year, when we didn't know what was coming, we didn't know how we were going to assess it. We did, you know, I, I just would, if we can relieve that stress valve a little bit, we might see a little bit more of that.
Thank you, Mrs. Robinson. I'm sorry, Ms. Flynn.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree with all the comments that my fellow board members have made. I think there are so many levels of frustration on this topic, and, and just one of them is when we have people who write us and say, just stand up to Tallahassee and say no. It's just so much more complex than just, you know, as you said, Ms. Colbert, you just can't do it. So, I find that frustrating. But I do agree with what everyone was saying about a common final, and it's also a fairness to students. We've had the issue of AP tests being used in different ways among the high schools. That was a concern to parents. One, one school or teacher will take the AP One, one school or teacher will take the AP test and let that really dictate the final. Another teacher at another school will include classwork. So if the classwork wasn't as stellar as the test, it might bring them down or, or somebody who did really well and didn't do well on the test, it affects their, their final grade. So I think that's a really pertinent example of being consistent and fair across the district. So I think to me, that's a reason for having a common final. So that was just what I wanted to add to the discussion. I agree with everyone. They were very eloquent in how they presented their case and I think Ms. Colbert for her really good review of the situation now and as it matches up to our accountability resolution. So I thank you for that.
Thank you, Ms. Flynn. Mrs. Robinson.
I have a couple of follow-up questions probably for Dr. McKelvey, if that's okay, Dr. Jenkins. You were, when you were discussing student growth, and this is a conversation I had with several of my email exchanges. When we talk about using the student assessments, like just, let's just choose second grade, the Iowa, for the purposes of evaluating the teacher and we use student growth, is it that, and I think I know, but I'm just asking, is it student growth from beginning of the year to the end of the year? Or is it literally the student growth from the teacher's last year's kids to this year's kids? Do you understand my question?
I do, I do. It makes a lot of sense. In most cases, it's the latter. And that's what we do with, for example, the statewide assessments and statewide value-added models. The fourth grade teacher, their learning growth is based on the difference between those summative fourth grade scores and the pre-test that we would call it is those third grade summative scores. So that's how that transition works. Now, you can tell, though, that there's a bit of a gap, right? A difficulty in the transition if you didn't have something in the prior year or if you didn't have that prior year exactly in that same area that you had this year. So one example would be what happens the first year you take Spanish one? What happens the first year you take some other elective courses? So there's a lot of ways that we do it and I don't want to get too deeply, but I'll get as deeply as you want me to into how we do it, but we call it, we tend to call it a calculated pre-test. So we say there are certain types of skills that students have, maybe in reading or mathematics and other subjects, that are very consistent, very strong and do provide some information about how they will do in future years and other subjects. And then once you have a larger kind of basket of assessments to base that pre-test on, then it becomes easier and easier to get an idea of, well, how much does a student grow in a year? What does a year's growth look like in your first year in a Spanish course or in your first year in a Russian course or your first year in an art course? So that's kind of what that does. That meantime, though, can be very difficult. And that's one of many of the reasons why Superintendent Jenkins has directed us to think about this as being able to use our discretion as a district to hold teachers harmless. Because as you can imagine, when you're building those models, when you're getting those calculated pre-tests, when you're getting those, that baseline data in place, you have years where you're trying to learn about the data. You're trying to see what happens. So it's actually an extremely difficult question and it's one where we rely on our great staff. We rely on expertise that we have. We rely on the relationships that we have across the country, either other psychometric departments at universities, other school districts. There are just some university centers that do research modeling, value-added modeling, student learning growth modeling, but it's a very difficult and complex area. We do our best to try to explain it. You know, the idea of pre and post, it is kind of hard to wrap the mind around a little bit.
Okay. Another one, to one of Mr. Siblet's comments when he was talking about, we'd like to have parents, and I hear this too, parents want to hear feedback on, and I understand the secrecy around FSA. And I have not had a child take FSA because I don't have that age this year, but I have had FCAT. And in the past, is FSA going to give us what FCAT did? Because FCAT did give you a list of, say, under math. You had your math score, but then you had areas, you know. Is FSA going to also have that? So you could, I could tell my son didn't do well in algebraic theory or whatever the different, are we going to have that with FSA?
So I'm going to do one of those things where I'm going to answer a question with complexity, but hopefully not in a way that inspires more questions. So if I do a poor job with this, please let me know. I'll try again.
You're doing great.
We had, and you might refer, referring to something in the FCAT we called like content areas, content focus areas, right? And so maybe, let's just say a math assessment has three different areas and let's say they each were worth, you could have 10 questions that potentially could be a correct. And area one, you got eight. And area two, you got six. And area three, you got seven. The problem is, is it, and the whole assessment altogether has 30 points, right? The problem is, is that that whole assessment has a certain kind of difficulty of questions and complexity questions on the assessment that is balanced for that entire assessment and kind of anchored and equated year over year. But each of those individual areas might be more or less difficult year over year. It's the assessment as a whole that kind of has to hold together. You're doing that, you're setting achievement level based on the whole assessment, not just those individual areas. So you get those scores back and they can be useful. And I agree with what the chairman said earlier. I know that when I took tests, I looked at those areas and I didn't know quite as much about assessment then as I do now, so I may have not been so rough on myself for maybe missing questions in certain areas. And then figuring out why, if I got them all right this time, why couldn't I just get that last one in the next area, right? Well, that's because those difficult questions bounced around, those most complex questions bounced around. So what we try to do is give some information back, and this, by the way, is the same kind of, you can imagine the same struggle in benchmark assessments, right? Where when you're split up by standard, you can't, you're doing, making sure the whole assessment fits together, but that doesn't mean every single standard, right, is going to then have the same amount of high difficulty questions or high complexity questions. You'd have to have a 300-question assessment to do that and no one wants to take a 300 questions. I don't want to take. So, so that's, that's some of the, that's some of the trade-offs that you have in an assessment, right? And with each assessment, you have to kind of go into it and say, what's the purpose of the assessment? And I feel like that's what you're getting to. What's the purpose of the assessment? How do we meet as best as we can multiple purposes of the assessment? So when we ask an assessment to do 10, 15 different things, we often create those tensions. We can't both provide all the information that we might like to ideally and keep it as secure enough to use for evaluation or maybe do something else that we want to come from the assessment. These are kind of the tensions that we face. So we will get some of those, either sub-scores, content focus scores, area scores, whatever we want to call them from the new assessment. We want to make sure that the interpretation makes sense because we don't want a school to say, hey, we averaged seven in this area last year and now we average six this year. What are we doing wrong? We've just got to improve in this area. Well, that's not really how the assessment design works. It may just be you had harder questions in that area and that's not information that we get from the outside. For ours that we receive, though, whatever the superintendent directs us to do, I mean, we, we can try to do our best to support. I know one of the things that is in CSHP 7069 are ways that districts, some things we have to do, some things they're trying to guide us to do about how we present this information to parents and teachers and the reporting deadlines for some of these things as well. Some of them have been helped with the movement to computer-based testing, though as we can see from the FSA rollout, if you don't have the right vendor, if you haven't done the right preparation, it can cause problems on the other side as well, having expanded computer-based testing. But these are part of those trade-offs of how you get the data back quickly and how it's meaningful. And I think it goes back to that tension of when you ask an assessment to do too many things, you have all of these competing demands that run against the assessment and those all pull you in different directions. We try to do our best to balance, but sometimes the ones that are just hard and fast statute, so for example, evaluation, tend to trump some of those other uses.
Okay, the million-dollar question. When, when FOIL meets with DOE May 6th and 7th, do we think they're going to tell us how they plan to do their validity assessment of FSA that's part of that bill? We're supposed to, do we think they're going to tell us how they plan to do that?
The only thing I can speak to that I'm aware of is that there is a large three-and-a-half, four-hour segment that is based solely on CSHP 7069. We just don't have any other information at that point. The only thing we know is exactly what you all have seen in the, in the bill.
Do you think it's valid?
Dr. Jenkins?
That's a tough question.
I would, Chairman, I, I will tell you, I probably wouldn't bet my life savings on it. I would probably not, but, but I think you raise a very critical issue because when you talk about timelines, if you don't have the validity study completed, this is a question Brandon and Gina and the rest of the team will be posing. If you don't have validity tests, studies completed, how do you release scores or grades? That's, that's going to be brought up. I cannot promise you that it will be answered.
Okay, one last thing and this, this is probably not necessarily for Brandon, so feel free to sit if you'd like to. I'm just going to read one little paragraph from an email that I've been going back and forth with one particular mom who actually is a mom, but she's also a teacher for OCPS. And her concerns have been wrapped around more what we were discussing a while ago where the goal of it would be to just have school and then the tests happen at the end of the year and not have everything wrapped around it. So she said, you know, we went back to that the school board makes policy. We make policy and we hire the superintendent to implement the policy we've put in place. And she says, well, then make a policy. So I'm going to read this to you. "Please advocate for our students by making policies that can safeguard them from the detrimental repercussions of the high-stakes testing the state and federal government continue to shove down our throats. You may not be able to change the laws, but we can pass policies to protect them." She means protect the students. And so I've sent back to her, I have not heard back, we've gone back and forth for days and I haven't heard back from her. I said, what policy do you want us to make? I mean, that's, that's valid. And I said to her, as I said, I said, that's a valid question. I'm not trying to be rhetorical here. I want a real answer because it's not that simple. And I think that's where she and I finally come to, is it's not as simple as it sounds. We can't just make a policy that overrides the law. So anyway, I'm just telling you, I just wanted to read that to you and that's the frustration and I feel that. I do feel it and if we can, it is, it's everyone's frustrated. If we could figure that out, but, so I'm just throwing that out. You don't have to answer anything. Thanks.
Ms. Moore.
Thank you for all of you going first. I think there was just really great dialogue and discussion tonight, so I don't really want to go back over same ground, but pretty much in support of what my colleagues have said here on the board. Dr. Jenkins, we know that when, when the session started, we were hearing the reformers saying they wanted fewer, better tests and, and I think certainly that's where we ended up. The question remains in terms of, and you have to look at the overarching goals of what we see out of Tallahassee and those that really control ed policy. We're not seeing them necessarily going away from the high stakes natures of things. They're still wanting to grade schools. They're still staying with common core standards. They're still staying with FSA. Those are really the, to me, the elephants in the room. And so now that they have sent all of this back down to us, there's a little part of my political mind wonders how much of it was calculated to then take the angst in these conversations and move it back to school board chambers rather than Tallahassee. Because it really was, let's be honest, it was very convenient to say, well, they did this, they did that, they did this, they did that. Now to have the conversation, it was really challenging, some of these emails this year. It was almost impossible to have a conversation in an email fashion because there was so much information that they would imply, the writer would imply and that I knew and we were all coming from a completely different frame of reference. So all of that is an introduction to say, I know you've been just tasked the last few days and Mrs. Colbert did a wonderful job of, of making us focus on, it's completely understandable where the, the public would be that, oh, great, they, they have fewer, better tests. Oh, good, so we don't have to do this, we don't have to do that. It just sounded so mom and apple pie and all of a sudden, these guns that have been pointed towards Tallahassee were now coming across our emails. So I don't know if you've had any time because you've worked exceptionally hard, Dr. Jenkins, on that three-page document, which I think will be great for us to excerpt and put out in our communications. So maybe in the next few months, we can tell where DOE is going because I think if you don't always keep the overall philosophy of those in charge of what they're really trying to accomplish, you can't respond correctly. So if you had a chance to, to evaluate it at a deeper level, we were, we were in the weeds and we needed to be tonight and we're going to need to be with our parents, but do you have any sense of where we're going so that we can be prepared?
Thank you, Chairman. Ms. Moore, I think a couple of things come to mind. I certainly don't have a crystal ball to prognosticate what will actually happen. I will tell you, I've had several conversations and I don't mind, and quite frankly, the commissioner doesn't mind responding to my concerns. My guess is we are going to go through an extended period of uncertainty until we have a validity story on FS, validity story. I hope it's not a story, a validity study. Do you remember there are three individuals who will select a psychometrician or company or consultant to conduct that validity story? Speaker of the House, President of the Senate, Governor have to agree on selecting, doesn't say anything about the commissioner, I don't believe, Dr. McKelvey. Those three have to select someone who is going to conduct the validity study. Fast forward, depending on that selection and the agreement of those three individuals, the study has to be conducted and then somebody has to verify it and release it. So my guess is the state will find themselves, and I'm hopeful of this outcome, I've said this to the commissioner, that the state will find themselves needing to back down and say, you know what, this first year really can only be a baseline or an initial year. It's really inappropriate to try to administer grades and any other high-stakes outcomes based on these scores. Now, I could be wrong because that selection from those three individuals might be ready to, to be signed and delivered and the, and the study ready to be conducted. If that is the case, sometime in the month of June, we may get a release of outcomes. Might just happen. I'm not, I wouldn't predict that, but we might actually get outcomes. And based on those outcomes, we will be in a predicament of trying to put forward policies and conduct different remediation and retention and promotion strategies than we're looking at today. So I will be very hopeful for further feedback on those areas in the morning on the conference call. Certainly, we will look forward to the FOIL meeting, but every week, we're trying to have conference calls with the commissioner and with her staff in hopes that there will be some, some kind of, of resolution. The biggest issue is whether or not they're going to release those scores in June and try to administer grades. That, that in effect has impact on some additional decisions. I don't see how they can release it, but I have no idea if they've already kind of selected who they're going to put forward for the validity study. Do you have any ideas, Dr. McKelvey? They, they haven't announced it at least, but they may be in discussion. Maybe they're going to be ready in the next week or so to have someone conduct that study. If it's a thorough study, it shouldn't be done in a week's time or in two weeks' time in, in our opinion. It should take some time, which means pushing back, releasing of data, and I hope that results in really what, what would equate to a baseline year for FSA as well. That's my hope.
Mr. Chair, just to follow to that, so, so I like what you said, an extended period of uncertainty. So that's probably the first place where the uncertainty will be. And then at some point, if, you know, you have to take all these paths, what if, what if if this happened? We could be facing grades, you know, in situations like we've seen in other states where the grades drop. We don't know. So, so just your final comment is depending on which path we end up, and you certainly spoke of the first juncture of, of this validity test from the psychometricians, do you sort of see that then how that works itself out would, will continue a period of uncertainty?
I think my recommendation to OCPS would be to move forward aggressively with our PR and making sure folks understand if they release grades, we are going to be very aggressive in how we communicate what we believe is appropriate about a baseline year and grading. We've got that all loaded and ready to go and we will move forward. I will tell you, if we don't hear anything further, we are prepared by the end of next week. I will tell you, if we don't hear anything further, we are prepared by the end of next week to move forward with our plans for both remediation and for promotion and retention decisions. We will move forward without the direction.
So, and then maybe this is a final question for the chair, then, you know, we certainly have a lot of interest from the anti-testing folks and the PTA and the parents and all these different groups, it's just such, like Dr. Jenkins said, a period of uncertainty. Hopefully, we can get through this period, you know, as a team, and we can continue to dialogue and take the time, I mean, we're taking extensive time tonight, but it's probable we'll have to continue to do these along the way, because there are so many little pieces. If a parent or a group or even one of us misses one little piece of information or something that shifted, you could have an opinion that would be wrong-headed just because you didn't know something because of all this uncertainty. So I didn't know if you had any final, and I'm done, words of wisdom of how we can get through this very carefully, because up to this point, you know, honestly, Tallahassee was pretty much setting the stage for all of it, and now we're going to have a greater role, and it's going to be really critical that we do it in the appropriate fashion and hold our parents, our teachers, ourselves together and give each other some room to be able to navigate these uncertain waters. So I just wondered if you had some advice.
I really don't, beyond what's already been said. I think we just need to wait to see what comes out of the May 6th, 7th meetings. I think we need to figure out what comes out of the legislature. I have a feeling this is going to be a work in process. You know, what I fear more than anything is, and I don't think this is even a remote possibility, but if that validity assessment comes back negative on the FSA, I think the state's going to be in full-blown meltdown, and I think we're gonna have to manage that. Now, knowing the way the legislative process works and knowing who is selecting the validity assessor, I do not think that will be the outcome, but I'm hopeful that it will be a hold harmless period. But, you know, what pains me, and forgive me, I don't want to go too much off-track, you didn't ask for this, but I do want to say this, it's a shame that it took a full-scale parental revolt in this state to get the legislature to wake up and smell the coffee. It really is. Because, you know, even some folks in this room don't realize this, we have been members of this board, you know, and forgive me, Dr. Jenkins, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, I hate to include you in this, but you as well, other senior educational leaders in this state have been warning legislative leaders and members of our delegation for the last year and a half of the impending train wreck. And I will never forget, and I don't know that I'll ever get over it, and it's gonna sound like so much ego, going before the legislative delegation about 12 months ago, and saying to them, you don't realize the groundswell of opposition and the revolt going on out there, it's no longer just the opt-out crowd, it's rank-and-file parents, it's teachers, it's administrators. You have created the perfect storm by, at the same time, throwing out FCAT, going to a new untested FSA assessment, adding on to that merit pay, adding on to that, and the course assessments in a district like ours, and over 1,000 courses. And, you know, y'all were there, some of you were at that delegation meeting, we were met with hostility and hostile questions, and were treated as if we were just, you know, revolutionaries who were against accountability and against assessment and thought that there should be no standards. I mean, that's how we were treated, and frankly, I think that's common throughout the state. And the problem with that type of approach of governing by the legislature is that they are, and they have been in a reactive mode for the last 12 months, and I don't think you ever do effective governance when you're simply reacting. And it's just, it's, poor Dr. Jenkins has had to listen to me rant about this ad nauseam for the last 12 months, and some of you, as Mr. Rodriguez has and others, and, you know, it's very, very frustrating, because, you know, Ms. Gordon always assumes, because I was in the legislature, and that they somehow listened to me, or that they somehow listened to you, Ms. Moore, you know, even close friends of mine in the Florida Legislature, I could tell even when I would try to talk to them about this issue, their eyes glaze over, and, you know, frankly, it was going in one ear and out the other. And, you know, it frustrates me, because I'm on record, and I continue to believe in accountability, but we've gone too far, and they went too far, too fast, and without really thinking through the ramifications, and now, you know, it's fallen down to the parents and the teachers and the students and the school boards to clean up the mess. And that's very, very frustrating. And frankly, that's what I feel like we've been doing for the last 12 months, cleaning up the legislative mess. Ms. Cadel.
I don't have a whole lot more to add, other than to say, you know, it seems like I've been fighting this forever, and like Chairman Sablett said, we have warned, we have talked. I talked to someone who introduced me one time as his new best friend, who he has all this respect for, and I said, "You need to understand, this is a train wreck that has already left the station. We have been trying to tell Tallahassee for months that, you know, the two trains are headed this way, and they're going to collide, and here are the things you need to be concerned about." And the thing that bothers me the most is, how many people tell me I'm not an education expert, so I just have to count on other people to tell me? Well, I can also argue that if you truly want jobs in the state of Florida, and you truly want economic development and a healthy Florida, you have a train wreck getting ready to happen. And Becky Couch was sitting with me at FSBA days in the legislature, and they have run a simulation based on last year's numbers of what Duval County will look like with taking the FCAT data from last year with the new accountability measures, and it's not pretty. And when you've got some of the major, when you've got some of the major economic engines of Florida having to look, so, you know, talking about getting out in front of this, and that our children didn't get dumber in one year, is going to be crucial, and something that Ms. Robinson said, and I don't know, somewhere in my career, I went to a dinner that had all of these inspirational things in front of us, and this has been at my board seat, and people who sit here go, what a great quote, Albert Einstein said, "You have to learn the rules of the game, and then you have to play better than anyone else." And I think the superintendent and her staff have worked really, really hard, as she has told us on numerous times, we have a sandbox that legally we have to stay within, but we can push the corners of the sandbox. And I know she probably didn't appreciate me calling and saying, "We already did this. Everybody in the state is getting credit for doing what we did, but for some reason, when we did it, it wasn't important." Or nobody thought, you know, that we were pushing the envelope. Maybe we didn't say we were doing away with the final exams and only doing EOCs, but when Ms. Cobert gave us the list of what everybody's talking about, I'm like, can you tell me what they're doing that we're not doing, that they're getting credit for, that we did before anybody else, and we're not getting any credit for it, except that we haven't said we want to do ACT or SAT or whatever and get rid of FSA? And so I think that has been my frustration, is we have been working really, really hard, but to all apparent advocates, you know, it goes back to, back in, and I have shared this story on one of more than one occasion, when Fund Education Now started, and I was up meeting in different offices, because I was chairman of the school board, and, you know, you guys were giving me the talking points, and off I went to Tallahassee. I wish I could tell you how many people wanted to know what the money was behind Fund Education Now. And I kept saying, "There is no money." And they're like, "Oh, yeah, there is." I said, "There is no money. They are mad moms." And it's like, the mad moms put up with a lot until you cross that line in the sand, and when you cross that line in the sand, they are not going to back down. And I mean, you can go back, we're getting ready to celebrate 145 years of history in Orange County Public Schools, I bet we can find different lines that have been crossed that the parents stepped up and revolted on, and I can think of a couple during, when I was a parent, and one of them you all are going to find hard to believe, but my oldest child in ninth grade, if you had perfect attendance, you didn't have to take a final, and you didn't have to take a semester exam, which was great, except when they went to college. And the fail rate of those children, because they never took a final exam, was astronomical, because they went to school every day, they showed up every day, they did their work every day, and I can remember the parents going, "We can't prepare children to send them to college if they don't have to take a test at least twice during the year that shows." And so, I mean, that was a parent revolt back in the 90s, and, let's see, he graduated in 95, so that would have happened in 91, probably, that the parents said, "This isn't okay anymore." So I think you can go back in our history and find, and this is the time, you know, we have crossed that line, but I also think what Ms. Robinson said, "I wish we could just whoop and change it." But we have laws we have to follow, and until we get those laws changed, we're going to do the best we can to protect our teachers and our children and our community, and I would argue, we're going to do the best we can to make sure that we can continue to develop the economic forces that we need for an Orange County that we're going to be proud of for the next 50 years.
Well said. Mrs. Robinson.
I have another question, Dr. Jenkins, if it's okay for Dr. McKelvey, if he knows the, another conversation, since we're having this huge conversation, I'm gonna throw as many things out there as I can. Couple people have asked me, what's going to happen? Do we know what's going to happen with the students who chose this year to opt out of the test, to minimally participate?
So we do know some things because of the new statute. So the statute has been written slightly differently now in CSHP 7069, where students have to receive a Level 2, a score of Level 2 or higher, in order to be automatically right-promoted to the next grade. So what we've, what there was before is a little bit of confusion in the law of what happened when students received scores that weren't scored, basically a score that wasn't an achievement level, not even a score, really just a value. And we've had these values in our assessment system for years. We've had values for students who got sick before the assessment, who answered one question, and an emergency happened. This has not been anything that's been created in the last few years. So it's very clear in statute now that in order to get that credit, in order to be promoted to fourth grade, you have to get an achievement level 2, 3, 4, or 5 on the statewide assessment. I don't know if that helps.
Is that just for third grade?
So the other, in the other grade levels, and this goes back to what Superintendent Jenkins says that we're still awaiting clarification for, is we do not know exactly what the interpretation of the district flexibility and the retention, the promotion laws are, and then you couple that with what we discussed earlier, which is not knowing whether or not the scores are going to come and the time when they're required by statute, which is the week of June 8. So until we have those questions answered, we know that the district now has increased flexibility for retention and promotion, but we don't know, to use the analogy that we're just using about the walls of the sandbox, we don't know how far the walls of the sandbox extend. We know that will be increased, we just don't know to what extent, and we've had some little bit of clarification of the walls of the sandbox for students taking the third grade assessment, in the way that I just described.
And do we know yet, or is that all still to be determined, about how it will impact teacher evaluations, if a teacher had a student or two that minimally participated this year, and then, I guess we don't know for schools yet, but for teachers, do we know yet?
Well, one thing that we do know is that these codes that students might receive for not answering enough questions to get a score on the assessment, students have received in prior years, and so if you didn't have a score in the prior year and then the current year, that student wasn't able to be a part of your calculation. So we can't do these counterfactuals about, would they have done better than the average of the students in the course, and maybe would have done better or worse? I mean, those are counterfactuals that by definition, we can't answer, because we don't know, we don't have the data. We do know, as Superintendent describes, that by August 1, the state has to come up with two things, right? Those uniform procedures that we have to follow for the submission and the evaluation and the monitoring of our instructional administrative evaluation plans. They also have to define uniform cut scores that we have to use for the statewide value-added models. Some of those things have to be included in that, right? Because you have to, if you're going to have uniform cut points and cut scores, you have to have uniform rules about how all of these things are considered, and they have to be statewide rules, because they have to be executed at the state level. So I can't tell you now what's in that, because we haven't received the rule text, but that's why I'm making a commitment to the superintendent, that when we do have that rule text, we'll do our best job to analyze that rule text and provide that to her, so that she can share that information with you.
So let me make sure I understand about the, towards the teachers' evaluation. At this present moment, a child who minimally participated doesn't count towards or against a teacher, because you can't, because there's no score, is that correct?
I want to be clear that I don't want to define it at the level of participation, I just want to define it on the outcome, right? What a student received or didn't receive. If you didn't receive a score, an achievement level, and a scale score, you, for all intents and purposes, didn't get a value for that assessment, and that's not a rule for this year or the past year. We've had value-added scores produced by the state since 2011, and that's how they've been handled, that's how students in that scenario have been handled by the statewide evaluation system.
I want you to repeat, because I don't want folks to miss that first portion, Dr. McKelvey, about the student and what the laws now state in the new law about students who do not complete the exam, that's pretty important.
And specifically, as it relates to the third-grade students?
Yeah, and again, that's why we're looking to send information out after that meeting on the 6th, because we're hoping for further clarification there, but repeat what you said about third grade, because that's important for parents to be aware of.
Absolutely. So as you know, there are two grade levels, right, where there are, in reading, where there are those specific requirements that are attached to the achievement levels that a student receives, at third grade and at 10th grade. So in third grade, in order to not meet that requirement, where you would have to get a good cause promotion in order to be promoted to fourth grade, you have to score an achievement level 2, 3, 4, or 5, right? So you have to have a valid score of 2, 3, 4, or 5, in order to be promoted without a good cause exemption.
Okay, and we do have good cause exemption in place?
Absolutely, and there are multiple good cause exemptions. There's good cause exemption, we described one earlier with the Iowa assessment, that a student could take and get a nationally norm-reference score, and those are established by the Board of Education. There's the ability to participate in a student portfolio, there's certain other exceptions that are provided for ELL students or ESE students, there are a whole list of them that are required in statutes. And when we produce that information that the superintendent was describing about remediation and promotion, that's when we also produce those memos, as we do yearly, taking schools through all of the different ways that the students could receive that exemption.
And I know, just from personal experience with my mentee, because he didn't pass the FCAT, 10th grade FCAT, they did have a provision that he could, if he got a certain score on the reading portion of ACT as a concordant score, which he did, yay, he's now gonna, he's done with the FCAT, but is that still in place, and is that number, it was 19, is it still that number, do we know for this year?
The direction we've received, and this has been pretty consistent for the last year, that until new concordant and comparative scores are set, that we'll be able to use the concordant and comparative scores that we have at this time. So we've also sent out some communication to our principals through memos concerning this.
So the same thing for Algebra 1, EOC?
That's right. That's right. Algebra 1, the PERT, the PERT is the only comparative. We have to call it a comparative, because it was constructed slightly differently. But it's the only comparative score that we have for the Algebra 1 assessment at this time. And you described one of the ones that we have for ELA assessment, obviously SAT would work as well for that.
Okay. Well, um, thank you very much. You do such a great job, Brandon. Dr. Jenkins, one comment I did just kind of want to make, and you don't have to respond to it necessarily, unless you want to. One of the conversations that I've had with several people, it was in response to this year, prior to the FSA season starting, you sent out a Connect Orange to all of our families talking about, you know, I can't remember exactly how you worded it, but something about if they opt out, you know, encouraging families to not let their children opt out. Anyway, they were, these families that I've spoken with, these several people that I've spoken with, felt that that was aggressive, assertive, a little too tough-handed. And I just kind of wanted to point that out, so that maybe going forward, you know, since we are in this altogether, and it is just something we are, I'm not saying I want everybody out there to opt out, but it is kind of a personal decision for them. And then I agree that we need to point out to them, like, like we just did, that if they don't get a Level 2, 3, or 4, 5, you know, they might be, but I just want us to maybe just make sure we don't seem like we're bullying or pressuring, I don't know. So just, I'm just, you don't have to respond to that unless you want to, but I'm just pointing out that that is a lot of comments around that.
So you know I have to respond, because you used the word bullying. So that script was reviewed and previewed and melted down as many possible ways, ran it by some parents who thought it was quite well said. And we did receive some positive feedback for it as well. I certainly accept your feedback. Thank you.
Ms. Cobert.
Thank you. Just a few final comments here. One, I want to reiterate that it's really important that we provide this, a specific mechanism for our teachers and possibly even students to give feedback on our, our Common Finals, so that we can, as we develop them, make them the best that they can be. I do think that we need to have a discussion, I don't know that it's tonight, but we need to have an ongoing discussion and clarification, what percentage will our Common Final Exams count for students and how we will handle that. On the third grade retention and remediation issue, I think until we do have a rule text or decision from the Department of Education, that's an area where I think we can go our own way and, and develop our own rules for, for how we're going to handle those students, whether we're going to use those good cause exemptions, portfolio, whatnot. So in, in absence of direction from the Board of Education, I think that's an area where we do right by our students and we can make our own decisions. And I know Superintendent has, has done some of that. And in light of that, I think it's just extraordinarily important that we communicate these things to the public. Right now, there is massive confusion with the, this, the state making the announcement and passing House Bill 7069. All of a sudden, some teachers, some parents, very well-educated parents said, that means we're not going to have this anymore, and that, that is not what the law says. So as we are, this is going to be fluid, this is going to be development in process over the next few weeks and next few months. I think communication is critical to our schools, to our teachers, and to our families, that this is how we're handling this, and this is the reason why.
You know, I just, I wish this hadn't come up, but I do want to weigh in. I don't think the message was inappropriate in the Connect Orange. I think it's very, very important as a school board, that we not say to parents or convey in any manner whatsoever, that complying with state law when it comes to the FSA assessments is an option, with refusing to comply is an option. Certainly, no child will be expelled, and every child has a federally guaranteed right to a public education. But I, I personally get very disturbed when a very small minority, and it is extremely small minority of parents, believes that they may not be hurting their child's educational advancement, their child's placement in courses, their child's ability to progress along a track they would like their child to progress upon, if their child chooses to opt out now. Want to be very, very careful how I say this, because I'm sure it will be misconstrued. That is not Orange County Public School policy, that is state law. And that's even increasingly tied to federal funding. So I personally think the more that we can do to make sure parents are educated about the adverse implications of their child opting out, the better it is for those children and for those families, especially for those parents who may have been under the misimpression that they have a legal right to opt out. Again, they're correct when they say that there are no sanctions as far as their child continuing to attend public school. That is a federal right that they have. But there are all kinds of, and it's been well spelled out by FDOE, possible adverse impact on their child if they choose to go that route. I also think, and I've had some personal experience with this, that we need to make it clear that, listen, if, if you want to have your child opt out, that is of course your choice as a parent, and your choice as a parent who has complete control over your child and their decisions that they may make. But that we will not tolerate any child disrupting the testing environment for the rest of the school or for that class. And that's not meant in a threatening way, but I know of a number of examples where a child was sent to the school and was instructed, I would assume, because this child was too young to have known to do this on their own, to go in the class, show up on testing day, and to intentionally disrupt the entire class's testing environment until that child was removed from the class. And that just can't simply be tolerated. And I'm, and I'm speaking as a parent now. You know, that, that infuriates me when my child's in there doing their best to get a good test score and to achieve in school, and yet their test is disrupted by 25, 30 minutes, because some parent sent their child to school and said, hey, go in there and stand up and start making speeches and disrupting the test, and, and literally shutting down the test. That, that happened. That happened. And actually, unfortunately, it happened multiple times. So, you know, that, that's not fair to the other children, and, and we just have to ensure that that does not happen. Mrs. Robinson?
I just wanted to clarify that I am not accusing the superintendent's message of being bullying. That was just words, I wanted to clarify that. Those are words that people used in an email to me. And I, I definitely think we agree with the superintendent, I mean, the chairman, we do need to let parents know what potentially, you know, what, what could happen if they choose to do this, because it is, it's state law. It's not, we're not coming up with this idea of FSA and standardized testing, it's just there. So I just wanted to clarify that I, I am, just wanted to point that out, it was just for going forward. And I think we need to do, maybe not necessarily just a Connect Orange call, but we need to do something to get the word out to our families, so that they understand what potential ramifications for their children are. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else have anything on this topic? Okay. I don't have anybody else queued up. I'm gonna shift gears completely. And Dr. Jenkins, I don't expect an answer to these two questions tonight. I gave you forewarning about a month ago, but we got so busy with other issues that I didn't ask them at the last meeting. I had a constituent bring two issues to my attention that, and again, if you're not prepared to address them tonight, Dr. Jenkins, I'd just like to know, if you can come back and give us a recommendation on them. One is, um, what the parent called course progression, but that's not really it. It's more the issue that we are, and I think this is the right way to go, pushing more and more of our middle school kids. And, and again, I want to make clear that I think this is the right to go into taking high school level courses or honors courses that will affect their final GPA. And increasingly, we have seventh graders even taking courses that will affect their GPA. And of course, we all know as parents, because all of us are parents or have been parents of public school children, I don't know if y'all are all like my wife and I, but you don't really sweat their grade point average when they're in middle school, or you don't sweat it in elementary. But once they get in high school, then it matters. So this parent brought this issue to my attention, and I thought this was a very reasonable request. If we could at least look into if a student who is a middle schooler takes a high school level course that, that, that will account towards their high school GPA, that if they elect to retake that course in high school, that the grade they get in high school could count in lieu of the grade they got when they took that course in seventh or eighth grade. So it doesn't mean that if they elect not to retake it again, that we would throw out that grade, but if they took, say, Algebra 2 in eighth grade, because they're a really high-level math student, and they got a D in eighth grade in Algebra 2, and they chose to re-enroll in Algebra 2 in ninth grade and take it again and got a B, that their grade in ninth grade would count towards their high school GPA and would replace the, the eighth grade grade. I think if we were to go that route, and if that is a reasonable request that we could look at, I think it would have to be important that parents understand that, listen, if your kid got a C in Algebra 2 in eighth grade, and they go take it in ninth grade and get a D, that D's gonna count. You're not gonna get it, you're not gonna get to pick the best grade. Okay? So if you elect to do a do-over, that, that grade's gonna count. So I just wonder if we could look at it. And the other one, I'll just throw it out, Dr. Jenkins, you can address both of them. I feel sort of strongly about that one, because I think it's a very reasonable request. The other one, I don't know the answer to the other one, and you've had some time to noodle on it, I don't know if you have some words of wisdom to me, but it's very true. And that, the same parent brought to me the issue of how dual enrollment courses are increasingly skewing GPAs dramatically. And we all know about that as school board members, because we go to graduations. I sat through a valedictorian speech last year that was almost painful, because the child, the child, the student, was a young woman, had graduated with about a 5.26, because obviously had taken quite a bit of dual enrollment courses. But the whole predicate of her speech and the context of her speech is, I know most of y'all don't know me, I know most of y'all have never met me. And she's up there getting the valedictorian speech, because she had hardly been on campus all of high school. She had been mostly dual enrolled, and she really was giving up the valedictorian speech. So that's a different issue, you know, that, that is what it is, that part doesn't bother me. But I think the persuasive points this parent made about looking at it, because you know, we, we count an A in a dual-enrolled course, I think under our system is six points, whereas we count an A in an AP course as, as six, but we count an A in honors as five. And I don't know how much truth there is to this, but I, I, I think that it's worth investigating. Sometimes those dual enrollment courses are not as rigorous as the honors course that that student may be taking at the high school level. And I think certainly sometimes those dual enrollment courses, and it's not a knock on our dual enrollment partner, it's gonna sound like it, but may not be as rigorous as that same AP course, yet you're getting the same credit for it. So I don't know what other states do with regard to GPAs when it comes to dual-enrolled courses. I don't even know if we have any flexibility there, or if there are some state laws that I'm aware, unaware of. The last point this parent made on that issue, and frankly, this one was very persuasive to me, is there is a little bit of an aspect of income inequity when it comes to dual enrollment. Because to dual enroll, you've got to come from a family that gets you to the community college campus to take those dual-enrolled courses. Or you have to at least have the initiative to get on a city bus, and we don't have the best bus network here in Orange County, as we all know, and get yourself to that campus. So I don't know if that is a valid point, I don't know. I'm sure that would be very easy to, to objectively look at and figure out whether there's data to support that, but my gut tells me, without even looking at the data, that you're probably gonna find more of your middle and upper-income students taking the dual-enrolled courses at the community college campus than you are your high-poverty students. So those were my two concerns, Dr. Jenkins. I don't know if you have had a chance to think about them, give me a response.
I do, thank you, Chairman. I've asked staff actually to look into both of these matters. I hate to tell you, both matters will require some intervention at the state level. So the waiting of dual enrollment and AP is state mandated. That does not mean we cannot lobby if this board is in agreement that those waitings need to be differentiated. I will tell you, some of our friends with College Board would probably agree that AP courses, they believe are more rigorous than dual enrollment. I will tell you, our local partners at Valencia would insist that dual enrollment is a set curriculum as well, and that you should be providing for college-level credit through any means that students are able to take advantage of. If, just if dual enrollment were considered to be easier, that would imply economically that children who don't have their own transportation are not getting at the easier college-level courses as readily as students who have their own vehicles. And part of the solution to that, we've had conversations with Dr. Sugar, part of the solution to that is that we need to bring more and more dual enrollment courses on campus. We have that functioning in some schools, not nearly at the level or at the number that I would like to see. So we'd like to pursue getting more of those dual enrollment courses on campus. My, my guess is, if that debate went to Tallahassee, the opposition would be from those who say dual enrollment is just as rigorous. College Board, I'll tell you, they say their product is more rigorous. We believe students ought to be given the opportunity to earn college credit through several avenues, any avenue that is possible. The inequities that are socioeconomic have to be dealt with by providing them locally, either providing transportation for students or bringing the courses on campus. So all of those concerns, we will certainly take under advisement. The other one, I think is easier dealt with on the local level. While the transcript issues and how you count those grades, we think there's some parameters on that. I've asked staff to look into what is a very common practice at the post-secondary level called grade forgiveness. We think we can make a solid case for it, but it will need to be pitched and hopefully get some, some approval, at least to start moving forward with it. I like the notion of the retakeability, but once you decide you want to retake, you can't go back and take the better of the, of the two. That's grade forgiveness for our post-secondary students. And so we've asked, we did ask staff, when you mentioned it, to start looking into it. I think it'll have to be eventually pitched to the State Department, and we'll keep you posted.
Well, for me personally, I'll take a half a loaf any day. So, you know, I, and frankly, I feel stronger about the, the grade forgiveness issue. I think we would also need to make it clear, that's only grade forgiveness for a high school level course that you took in middle school, not, not at any other level. Gosh, I'm tired. There was something else I wanted to say about what you just said, Dr. Jenkins, I'm totally blanking out. Well, must not be that important, as my wife would say. Mrs. Robinson?
Well, I just wanted to, since you brought up the dual enrollment thing, basically, because my son's looking at taking a few next year that actually will be on the school campus, he won't have to go to them. And he's looking at going to some, you know, pretty prestigious colleges. And every time I ask his counselor, so if he takes a college algebra dual enrollment instead of AP Calculus, the second part, you know, what is, how's that gonna affect him? And, and she can't speak to some of these schools that he's looking at out of state, but she says, I can just tell you what the University of Florida admissions people tell me, we'd rather them take an AP class and get an A than a dual enrollment class and get an A. They don't, they just don't see it, they, they, you know. And so I said, what about an AP class with a B? And she says, oh no, they want an AP class with an A. And I'm like, oh my gosh. So anyway, it is very interesting. And then, as we've been looking at all these colleges all over, the out-of-state ones, a lot of them don't even acknowledge that you took dual enrollment. You know, they don't give it any weight, they don't give it anything. And it is interesting, too, that we weight AP and dual enrollment 6.0 scale, but then when, when like UF and Florida... But then, when like UF and Florida State and UCF recalculates our students' core credits for just the five core classes, they only give you 4.0 for an A in a regular class, a half a point for honors, and a full point for AP and dual enrollment. So they don't do them. So why we're on two different, I don't understand. That doesn't really make sense, especially if it is state-mandated. That's, I don't know. The whole thing is very convoluted, and it would be interesting. And it is kind of interesting to be at a graduation where the student is pretty much introducing themselves to their peers. But more power to them if they had the time and the energy to go take all those college classes and be graduating with their AA and their high school diploma at the exact same time. I don't know.
Well, and if you'll forgive me, that's a point I was going to make that I forgot, and that's why I'm conflicted on it. Because I do think we need to encourage a kid trying to get an AA degree at the same time as a high school diploma. But going through the college journey with my junior-aged daughter now, as all of y'all have been through it now, the colleges throw all that out. They don't even take that GPA if they're an out-of-state college. The same way, some only give you college credit for a four on the AP, or a five, or a three. And then on, you know, one other argument this person made to me that is also very, very persuasive, but that dual enrollment also skews your top 10%. And your top 10% is increasingly important for getting state aid awards as well. So, you know, maybe some we need to talk to the legislature about looking at. I don't know. Ms. Flynn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I, for one, would, if we're going to do that grade forgiveness, I'd let the kid pick which one he does best on. I mean, that's, that was just my opinion. I mean, why not? Although that, I, well, I would let him pick the best of the two. In regard to dual enrollment, I understand the differences between the AP and what the schools look like. But for so many of our students who do direct connect with UCF and stay in the area, what a gift to them. Colonial High School, a Title I high school, has a very, very solid program going on. Now, it happens to be close to the east campus for Valencia, but last year, I think they had 14 students graduate with their AA, direct connect to UCF. And that's an option that a lot of our students take, and I think that is terrific. So there are different paths, Ms. Gould would say, path, different paths that people will take. And I think we can't minimize the value that that AA has and the dual enrollment has for our students.
Ms. Cato.
Well, and Ms. Flynn, thanks for sharing that, because I think one of the most, one of many impactful mornings was the morning that Governor Scott met with the children at Colonial. And they don't qualify for a lot of aid, because they are immigrants, or they, and they, some of them were going to have to leave the community to go to Puerto Rico to work or to go to schools over there, because so many doors are shut for them to get a higher education. And these were very, very articulate young people who were very well-spoken and talked about the barriers. So we do have children all over the spectrum of meeting the needs. We can't focus just on the top. We can't focus just on the bottom. We have to make sure that we're looking at all of our children. And if we say, you know, we're teaching every child, it isn't the same path for all children. The other thing, I think, has made a difference in the dual enrollment, and I know this will give Ms. Gould heartburn, but when the school start date changed, and our state universities are on quarter semesters, whatever the heck they call them, but they end at the winter holidays. So a lot of the schools that were able to offer dual enrollment on campus, all of a sudden, there weren't college professors that were willing to wait two weeks or three weeks after their college started to come teach this class to children who wouldn't be able to take the exam until after the winter holidays. So there was, there was a lot of angst in that. And, you know, it's one of those, I understand the tourism point of view. I understand the parents who say, and I was one of those parents, "We didn't get to take the winter holidays off, because my child needed to work on whatever those skills were going to be, that were going to be tested two weeks after they came back." And so I understand all sides of it, but we need to figure out exactly where that is. And we also are going to have to figure out, some of our children will be able to make really good livings in the new economy with different certificate programs. And some of our children are going to be very, very good at whatever they choose, and then they're going to decide to go to higher education. And I think we are starting to see that, and we need to continue to change, because we have heard multiple times that the children who are graduating today will have 10 different jobs before they retire. And they may start out in marketing, and they may end up in computer programming before it is all said and done, or the reverse. And so one of the things that we're trying to figure out is, how do we prepare those children? And the biggest, a lot of times when I have conversations with parents, you know, we all assume that our children are going to college, and we want things to be better for them than it was for us. But sometimes, those young people aren't ready to go, and it would be okay for them to try something before you spend a whole lot of money. And if the state university system really and truly wanted to get children out in four years, I would challenge them to look at a lot of private colleges that you don't get a fifth year to get out. It's four years, and you're out. And they do everything they can to make sure, four years and you're done. And so, you know, I said that when Phil Handy was the Commissioner of Education, or the Chairman of the Board of Education. I said, "You know, if you really are serious about getting to the point where children aren't in college for six years, look at some of these private college models, that they have a pretty high graduation rate of four years." And I think Rollins told us 80% of their graduates graduate in four years. He said 80. He said, "That's not high enough for us. We wish it were higher." But I don't think there's a state university that can report 80% of their graduates doing it in four years. So, you know, I think it takes a lot of dialogue with our higher education institutions throughout the state, but it also takes us and it takes our parents to understand that there are some other opportunities for our children.
Thank you, Ms. Cato. Ms. Coburn.
Thank you. Now, I hesitated to bring this up at the board table, because one of my children would just die, but, okay, thank you. That helps. But I think it's appropriate that I just bring this up, and Superintendent and I have had conversations about this. But this goes to equity across the board, and some of what you were talking about, Mr. Siblott. It's come to my attention that many of our different high schools calculate how they determine who is valedictorian in different manners. And so there are situations where you have a child who is number one or number two in GPA, in that weighted GPA, because that child has, has really chosen the rigorous route, which is what we want to encourage. But that child is not counted as a valedictorian, even though they might have taken 15 AP classes and made an A in every single one. And then there are others who, because they had all As, but in not as rigorous course level, are deemed valedictorian. So whichever one is deemed to be okay, is fine, but I think we need to look at having an equitable policy across the board. I certainly have said many times that I'm a proponent of school communities making certain decisions about policy within, in their class. But I think this is something that goes to, this goes on a resume or an application for college and can have other ramifications. So I think we need to look at making that something that's more equitable across the board with all of our high schools.
Ms. Gould.
I think I've forgotten what I was going to say. It's getting late now. And I have no food. Well, you know, there's a couple of things that have been brought up, you know, in this. One is the dual enrollment. One is the timing of schools. And since we have a new rule out there, and I don't think we should belabor this tonight, but I do think that we should think about it. You know, the Calendar Committee is going to come back with their recommendations, but it is absolutely important that we have a community conversation about that. Whatever we do with the schools, all input needs to take place, from our teachers, from our parents, to the consideration of how the curriculum is input. But we cannot ignore the fact that our largest employers and the driver of our economy right now is still tourism in this area. As much as we want to diversify it, and we are heading in that direction, they need to have a voice at the table, and then we need to take all input. So on that point, I wanted to say. And I want rigor, but I don't want just academic rigor. That's the other thing. I think there is skill-based rigor that is just as important, if not more important, as we go into a diversified global economy. We need to put as much emphasis on that, and we need to keep teaching up to the leaders of this state that while they may be our peers in age, and there's many of you who are younger than me at this board table, but in this relative couple of decades that we cover, the world is a different place. I just had a meeting with Dr. Armbruster today and the World Trade Association, talking about, you know, the Newport. When you look at the job diversification that the Newport will bring in alone, and it's not all about the engineers that are going to design it, but with the amount of cargo that's going through there, the transportation, the facility management, the computer technology, the welders who are going to have to build that place, the, I mean, think about the air conditioning and systems that are going to be there. It's just, it's incredible. We were talking about security and TSA and customs and the expansion in those fields, and it's absolutely incredible. Not all those things require degrees, but they do require skills-based education that has the same rigor and sense of career accomplishment that is absolutely necessary to be the first in line to get the best job. And that's what I want for our schools, is the first in line for the best job, no matter what that job is. And that's what we can deliver. So it's a little off our original topic, but everything came up tonight, so what the heck?
Well, that was a good way to end. You know, I know sometimes I feel bad when we have these discussions, because I think it's like watching paint dry for the audience. "Oh, Dr. Jenkins, I was just about to do my wrap-up." Okay. But I do want to say this, you know, with all apologies to our audience, I love it when we have these lengthy discussions at the board level, because, you know, we spend too much time talking about non-classroom education things and not enough time about what goes on in the classroom. And I think it's all why we get elected and what our charge is. So Dr. Jenkins, and then Ms. Flynn? Or do you want to go last?
I can go last. I was going to end with some.
Okay. Well, Ms. Flynn will end on something positive.
Well, Mr. Chair, what I wanted to do was just have an observation about this board and what a unified unit we are. We all have different thoughts. We don't always agree. But I do think that we're a team, and it really has shown in the past few months, as we are trying to get these schools approved to build some of these relief schools. And I wanted to thank you, Mr. Chair, for being our leader and for sticking up for us and not being afraid to say some things in the press. And I just wanted to thank you for that. I appreciate you sticking up for the school board.
Thank you. Dr. Jenkins. Let's just end right there.
I was going to say, I feel so bad, because that was really positive. That should have been the final note. Two really quick things. On the valedictorian, certainly we can administer that via policy. We've talked with staff and with a couple of board members. That would mean you would be saying it to middle school parents, so they don't misunderstand and think that you're going to follow the past precedent of unweighted GPA. So you start with your course code directory information that you're communicating to middle school students, and then you can convert. Because if they're already in high school, and they're under this premise that unweighted gets valedictorians, even if there are a dozen of them or more, it would be unfair. So we need to look by policy and start implementing that for middle schoolers, so that we can be consistent. Also, wanted to note for Ms. Gould, the Calendar Committee does have several stakeholders, parents, teachers, et cetera, on that Calendar Committee. But I don't take for granted that our tourism industry should have a voice as well. Now, they may not be at the table on the Calendar Committee, but they certainly can address the board when the board has to make a decision. Already had a conversation with Rich Maldeki. George Caladren is from Disney. I'll certainly be talking with him as well. And last night, we met the new CEO for SeaWorld. That is Joel Manby. Hope more of you get to meet him soon. We certainly want all of our community partners to be engaged, because they are very supportive. So I appreciate your comment. Here's the good news I was going to end on. Next week is Teacher Appreciation Week. And information will be going out to teachers. We've got free laser tickets, laser tag tickets. We've got free yogurt. We've got tickets to Predator games. Listen to this. We have, for drawings, we have iDrive 360 tickets. People want to get on that new? You go first, and then tell me how it is. We have champagne flights, that is on the new Orlando Eye. The Aquarium Madame Tussauds. We've got Blue Man Group. We've got public gift cards. We've got free tablets that we will be giving away in drawings. Thanks to our wonderful partners, business partners, contributions, we're going to have a wonderful Teacher Appreciation Week. That information will be going out to teachers. All they have to do is sign up for the drawings. That only goes back to our Community Relations Department. When they sign up, they get three free gifts automatically, and then they'll be in for the Orlando Eye and tablets and so forth, those additional, more higher-priced tickets as well. We're very pleased. It's the best response we've had from our business community in years to have these kinds of gifts to provide to our teachers during Teacher Appreciation Week, starting on Monday.
A good note to end on. State of the Schools Tuesday, 7:30. Hispanic Advisory Council, first meeting of the year tomorrow night, 6 o'clock here at DLC. And with that, we are adjourned.